Sorry, I didn't, I didn't give you a thirty second line.
That's okay, just delaying a little bit. All right, Councilmember Edwards?
Here.
Councilmember Hill?
Present.
Councilmember LaRae?
Here.
Councilmember Best?
Here.
Councilmember Thomas?
Here.
Councilmember Tharp?
Present.
And Mayor Green? Here. All right. All right, please join me in the official pledge of allegiance to the moment of silence. I pledge allegiance to the law. I must say this. And to the people who wish to stand. One patient under our influence as well. Thank you. We have a very full agenda tonight, so for some intrepid soul, entertain a motion to approve the agenda unless there are changes that we would like to make. Ten seconds. All in favor?
I am.
Any opposed? Okay, House speaking matters. This is a full agenda, so buckle up. We're going to try to keep us on time and allow good conversations where, where they must occur. Okay, let's take public comments. For items not on the agenda, please come up. When you're called, state your name. You'll have three minutes. Steve?
Steve Presley, Leadville, Colorado. On thirty ninth and Third Street. Sometime in the past, I think I talked about, or perhaps I did, Carbondale had some immigrants that moved in that were living underneath the bridge. I remember I clipped a newspaper article. On Saturday, they have another article in the paper, Carbondale to Reduce Immigrant Services. I think I did talk about, there was a court case in Oregon where a lawyer stood up for either five or six people that were homeless, and they were camping in the woods. And they found out that, I think it went to federal court, that if they don't have a place for, a shelter for people like that, then they're allowed to camp in the woods. I can't remember the precise details of it. So I was thinking that issue's going to come to bear in Leadville at some point. Because we do have some people living in the woods. My experience is they heavily trash up the woods from walking through their winter slides in the spring. So we can't, at this point, I think we can legislate against that, but at some point in the future, if this goes the way that Oregon went, and someone defends their issues, I think we should have some kind of shelters set up where these people can be challenged with the option of somehow expanding shelters with the idea that if they don't want to stay in shelters, then there's a cause to victim from the forests. So hopefully, we can think about that for the future to get some kind of shelter set up and that not long term, but that kind of thing. So thank you kindly.
Yes, sir. Are there any other publicly letting comment for items not on the agenda in the house? How about online? All right then. Moving along, we have the consent agenda. This particular one includes both our minutes from January sixteenth as well as Resolution number seventeen, which we discussed at our last meeting, authorizing a financial contribution to Leadville ski-jogging. Does anyone want to remove items from the consent agenda for discussion, or I would entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Edmonds moves to approve the January sixteenth agenda. One minute seconds.
I have a couple more time on the agenda.
I'm learning minutes, so I said.
Minutes. So the consent agenda includes both the minutes from the sixteenth and Resolution number seventeen. If you want to comment on either one of those items, we have to remove it from the consent agenda. And then we'll discuss it separately.
I just had some concerns about the minutes and things I thought.
Okay, then let's remove the minutes of January sixteenth from the consent agenda, or you could ask to do that.
Do I need to have to do that?
Need to make a motion.
Yeah.
So I move to amend the consent agenda?
To remove the minutes of January sixteenth from the consent agenda.
I move to remove the minutes from January sixteen from the consent agenda.
Edmonds seconds.
All in favor?
I am.
Any opposed? Continuing with the consent agenda then, it now only includes Resolution seventeen. Would anyone like to make a motion to approve that part of the consent agenda?
No. Agenda about the minutes.
Ten seconds. Because this consent agenda includes Resolution, I'm going to ask for a roll call vote, please. Mayor Green? Yes. Councilmember Tharp?
Yes.
Councilmember Thomas?
Yes.
Councilmember Best?
Yes.
Councilmember LaRae?
Yes.
Councilmember Hill?
Yes.
And Councilmember Green?
Yes.
Thank you. Okay, let's discuss the, your concerns about the minutes.
Yeah, I mean, quick. It said that ski-jogging was airing on Mountain TV. Is that true? I thought there was no broadcast of ski-jogging this year.
We can check on that. I know there was no live broadcast, but I don't know if there was, like, there's going to be a broadcast at some point. We can check on her.
Sounds good. I don't see the motion. There was a motion to seat Shannon Grant. I only see the motion to seat Councilmember Best. Should the motion be in there? The motion to seat Shannon Grant?
I can't remember. Did it fail to lack of a second, or was there a vote on it? There was a vote.
There was a vote.
Okay, yeah, okay. Then we can add that.
Okay.
Anything?
There's a note in there about, I'm finding the page. Page six says outdoor Leadville doesn't provide, and it should be Get Outdoors Leadville. And then, just correcting a comment on page six attributed to me. It says, mentioned, he is on the board of Bright Start and excited to get started. What I said was I was excited for us to apply for the funds that is in the Early Childhood Fund that the city can contribute to. And that's all.
Any other proposed changes to the minutes from January sixteenth? Since we're pending clarification on the question, can we just kick this down to reappear on a consent agenda in the future?
Sure.
Okay.
Yep.
Let's do that.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much for, for those fixes. Okay. Let's move on to presentations and discussions. City Administrator Report. Okay, I want to start off talking about the ski-jogging weekend. First of all, I want to thank the Police Department and Streets Department for all the work that they put in to have it go so smoothly. You know, this is one of our big, biggest winter events. And, you know, when you gather that many people, there's, there's always potential for things to not go right. It went very, very, very smoothly. Acting Chief Prior reported overall it went smoothly. The majority of calls per service were with parking problems during the event. The heavy snow Saturday did create some issues for the competitors to find trailer parking on Sunday. The Streets Department was violently out and wanted to clock the morning plowing, so we had that on top of the event itself. The PD helped them out by letting, letting out a trailer in the City Hall parking lot and corralling some of the horses along the back rail of the city. So a lot of working together to make it go so smoothly. He noted there were no calls for fighting at the bars, which I think is even better. He says, violence in Leadville events has been trending down significantly in the last five years. So I actually overall think that I've heard the same thing, which is great. This is the third year of the temporary use permit for ski-jogging, so Acting Chief Prior and I did meet out on Avenue a couple times throughout the event, and he had definitely had some feedbacks, educational things we can do with some of the bars in town to make it go even more smoothly, but it, it is by all accounts, I think it went really well. So I want to thank the Streets and Police because they were the heavy list on those. So we have no major incidents as well, so that's great. Another shout out to Streets and PD, and actually on the ski-jogging, I want to also thank the, our partner agencies, including Sheriff's Office and the Colorado Rangers, who came out to help on the, with law enforcement at the event. On February twenty seventh, Ford did a film shoot on Harrison Avenue. And so it was a film shoot in town for, it's essentially, you probably never see it on real TV, it was footage for their local dealers. I want to say this is another event where City and County coordinated very well together. We worked with CDOT, had a very brief two minutes where they would run a car and run a camera and do a shoot, and then open, I think it was Sixth to Ninth, if I'm correct. The only bad luck we had was we, at the very same day, got a couple of big rigs stuck in the snow, rounding the corner, right, right as you come into town. And so people, we got complaints about the film shoot shutting down Harrison. It was not the film shoot. It was two big rigs. So I want to thank Police for helping us out with that and getting us through that. I did want to say, the gentleman who was their point person for the film shoot sent me a note afterwards, and I just want to read it. He said, I am glad we were able to film in Leadville yesterday with such great cooperation for your office and the police officers and sheriff's deputies. It is such a privilege to have such a professional support from the City and County. Also, the outside is so perfect for our base camp and such great support there. I will always try and get companies to come to Leadville, Lake County for any commercial films and shoots. In all caps, you are the best. So a lot of that, thank you, goes to Lori Ty, because she worked tirelessly with the film shoot folks. And we had a great plan in place, and then they came up and did a little reconnaissance the day before and wanted to change all the plans the day before, and we were able to accommodate that. So, I mean, that's just really teamwork. We, we worked really well with the Sheriff's Department. They did a shoot in the county as well. If y'all don't remember, it snowed sideways that day. So I hope they got some great footage. This is just an evidence of the partnership that really works and, and the efforts that people put in to make things go so smoothly. So I want to thank Lori for all of that. I think we were tearing her hair out for a few minutes, but only just a few minutes.
Oh my man.
Yeah. On that note, I want to congratulate Lori Ty. She is the successful applicant for the Police and Fire Department Administrative Assistant position. You remember that you all created that position in the Fire Department for twenty twenty four budget, and as you know, Lori has been really helping them out quite a bit, and so she is their successful applicant. So we are very excited for her. I congratulate her. So we have a transition plan in the works. The Fire Department knows that, well, Dan's very apologetic, and I said, no need to apologize. I said it in the staff meeting earlier today. People can leave as long as they don't leave the city. I'm good with that. So Lori is still going to be in the family. I think it's a great, that's a fantastic choice, and so we are going to work on a transition plan. Our Human Resources Director, Paige Behill, will be, don't think we'll get an ad in the paper this week, but we'll have an ad in the paper next week for Lori's position, and then we'll work on a, a transition plan that works for the City Hall and that for, so congratulations, Lori.
Thank you.
Very much. Just a couple of other announcements. Short-term rental renewals. Those renewal notices will go out on March fifteenth. We, you will be seeing an ordinance regarding the numerical limit for those at your next council meeting. Chapeau has been working diligently with our City Attorney's Office on that, so you will see that at your next council meeting. What we're going to do is save some other changes that our City Attorney's Office has recommended for a later date. There are some changes that they have recommended based upon litigation that's going on. I think you might all know there are some cities that are being sued over their short-term rental ordinances. And so our City Attorney's Office has some recommendations and tweaks for us to better our ordinance, but we've decided we want to get that numerical limit out to you now because we are coming up on renewals and we need to decide, are we going to have a decline in the overall number of licenses available through attrition, or are we going to stay where we are? And we need to know that. By the time we see how many people have renewed, are we going to open up the waitlist? So our Deputy City Clerk can remind me when they have to renew by?
April thirtieth.
So April thirtieth. So we're going to try and get this before you for the next city council meeting, the ordinance, so we can have a, a clear number before we get to the point where we decide are we opening the waitlist or not. Update on the Leadville Police Department Sheriff's Office IGA. I've had numerous meetings with Sheriff Speckman. We have spent a lot of time talking about terms and parameters. I think we're getting very close to what it will look like. The biggest issue right now, I think, is the cost. And so I have a revised draft from the county that I would like to take a look at, which just came in within the last, I don't know, three or four days. But we're getting, we're getting there. I think we've had some good progress and some good conversations about what it looks like. We all agree that having more police officers in our community is necessary so that we don't have burnout for our current officers. The good news is that the Sheriff's Office has some prospects that will be starting soon. I believe within the next month. So that will help them with their staffing for twenty twenty four. We have a prospect who is interested in Leadville and came up to work with our department for ski-jogging and had some great meetings with our current staff, and we will be continuing that applicant through the hiring process. So that includes the, I think we're aptitude test, making sure there's a current medical psych eval and a few other steps. So there are a few steps. But the big thing was that applicant came up and, and we, we think might be a good fit for us. Yes?
For chief or officer?
Officer.
Okay.
And there are some other, so Acting Chief Prior has been working with several people who might be interested in part-time. So Human Resources Director Behill has been putting together a part-time police officer job description, and we will be looking to see if there are some people who used to work at our department who are interested in coming back, who also might be a good fit. So I think we are in a place where the sheriffs, you know, we, we talked, I don't know, three or four months ago about the difficulty in hiring. It's not an impossibility. It's difficult, but it's not a complete impossibility. So I, I have hope for Sheriff's Office not being so threadbare and us being not so threadbare. Councilmember Edwards?
Will we see the IGA on next meeting's agenda?
I don't know. Uh, I think we still have a.
May I make a very strong request that we see the IGA on next meeting's agenda?
I, I will take that apart. I will do my best.
Please.
Yeah.
All right, with a second. I would like to see that IGA, even if it's not the final version, at least so I have a framework to live with.
Yeah, I think we're closer than we, we have been. What I don't want to do, and I understand that the council would like to see it, but you all know that things go in the packet. And then I don't want to create expectations for the public that aren't even within the ballpark. So I, I don't want to set expectations about what it might cost or what it might look like. So I will, I will do my best to get that. Yeah. I think, I feel like we're a lot closer than we had been. But I do think that right now the ask from the county is for the ship coverage that they're asking for. The cost comes down to five hundred dollars now. Five thousand dollars per ship, and that is not tenable for the city. So what the county is asking for right now, I think we have a good scope of duties and we're, 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 we're very close on what the relationship looks like. The county is at, the, the Sheriff's Department through the county is asking for four hundred thousand dollars this year, so some four hundred thousand dollars, and then seventy five dollars per hour. And my concern with that is, what I told Sheriff Speckman is, what we're looking for is a lease arrangement, where you build into the cost per hour, the cost to you. So including whatever vehicle, uniform, training, you build that cost into the cost per hour. My concern right now is that what the Sheriff's Office is asking for is essentially we put the down payment on the house, we pay the mortgage, and we don't get the house. So they're asking for us to pre-fund their vacancies for police officers to the two to four hundred thousand dollars, so that, and then seventy five dollars per hour for those people to work for us. And I think that is not a good variant for the city. I think if I had four hundred thousand dollars, I'd go hire our own employees, and then they would be employees that we would, we would have as that long-term asset in the city. So that's where we are. I think we're making progress. I received a revised version from County Attorney Chris Floyd, and he will be working on that. So that's where we are right now. Couple things. JP Housing Trust wanted me to mention that currently Sarah Day represents Lake County on the JP Housing Trust Board of Directors. But as you all know, sadly, she is leaving the state. So the remainder of her term will be filled by Rachel Woolworth. As you remember, Rachel was the editor of the Herald, so I think that's a fantastic choice. But the JP Housing Trust will have to open seats on the Board of Directors that need to be filled by election at their upcoming annual meeting on April, the actual date to be determined. They would like to find a potential candidate to represent Lake County or candidates to represent Lake County. One can be a government employee, appointed or elected official. The other cannot be any of these and must represent the community. So if you or someone else knows of someone who's interested in serving on the JP Housing Trust Board of Directors, please send them my way, or if you know Reed, call her directly, you can contact him. Eight oh nine spruce, just wanted to give an update that the, the house is serving its purpose, so we are down to just only one room being available. I don't know if you remember my joke at the Lake County Community Fund Dinner last year on the State of the Union. I said that we had our municipal court clerks living there, our police chief, and all we needed was a bus driver and a baker to lead us to my street. Well, I would want to say that one of our tenants is a bus driver, and the other is a postal worker. So eight oh nine spruce is now officially Sesame Street. But I just wanted to highlight to you all, we, we talk about things and we ask you to do things and you vote on things, and we hope that it plays out. And this, if you think about who that house is serving right now, are essential services. So our municipal court clerk, a bus driver, a postal worker, and and a reporter for the Herald. So there's one room available, and we still have interest in it. Obviously, there, even the Tabor Opera House Foundation Board Executive Director vacancy, if someone comes from out of the area, could utilize eight or nine spruce, so. Recruitment, I mentioned a little bit about how things are going with the Police Department. I want to highlight, we, you all approved the planner one position to help Chapeau, Chapeau LeChance, our planning director out. That position, the position description is finished, and we're working on posting that position and getting word out about that. That is help that is desperately needed. And our Human Resources Director has been great on getting, working with Mr. LeChance on that. So we are fingers crossed that that help is on the way. The last thing is the mayor has graciously agreed at the last minute to attend the Outdoor Recreation Management Meeting. So Adam Ducharme met with me today and explained this, is there is grant money from Get Outdoors Colorado, GOCO, the Forest Service and Colorado Parks and Wildlife, that in order to apply for this money, you need a Outdoor Management Recreation Steering Committee. So previously, we had been working through JP County to request money from these entities. We'd like to stand up our own steering committee so that the steering committee is actually the applicant for funds for Outdoor Recreation Management. And Adam is spearheading this. The first meeting will be Friday. I have a conflict, the mayor had a conflict, but she's graciously agreed to attend the six-hour meeting. I did tell her it's six hours, full disclosure. So this is Leadville having a table. County will be there, you know, Forest Service, Parks and Wildlife, all, everybody in town will be there to help pull together this steering committee. So thank you, Mayor, for agreeing to attend that. But that's fantastic. One of the things I want to talk about is, is that oftentimes when I got here, Leadville didn't have a seat at the table. We weren't at the table. So this is a chance for us to be at the table. And, and so in JP, JP County has been great at including us in some of their proposals on Outdoor Recreation Management. But this is our chance to create our own steering committee, set our own priorities, and then apply for funds ourselves. So this is Leadville getting a chance to be at the table. So I think that's great news. And with that, I'm happy to answer any questions.
I have a couple observations.
Yes.
Comments? Ski-jogging Saturday was crazy. Lots of people. And I think in the future, we might consider porta potties. Just judging from the amount of people I have coming to my business.
Right.
needing to use the restroom. We should definitely start considering that.
I will take that. So this is a good timing for that because their, their temporary use permit will come up. They have one porta potty out here in front of City Hall, and if the feedback is we need more in the future, we could easily have put on our, with Miss Ty, things. I think we could have put two or three right here. And we can maybe find a location for some more further, further down, but noted.
And also regarding the Ford shoot?
Yes.
I had a constituent reach out, business owner on Ninth. We felt like he was not informed that that was going to happen, and it affected his business. So several business members on Harrison Avenue commented that there was no communication from the city. The only notification that we received on Harrison Avenue, retail-wise, was the director coming by and asking for waivers, but there was no communication from the city that there would be an event or shutdown on Harrison Avenue that.
Yeah, so that was the intended communication. So we, the applicant agreed to convey the information, and I'm sorry that information just came across the signing of the lease. But that was the agreement with the applicant, that a number of the tasks that were involved with city staff being in this and things they wanted, we didn't have the staff for. So we said, if you're willing to do that, then we can approve this. So we will tighten that up for next time and have them make it clear that it isn't just signing the lease.
And maybe if they're, if they're going around, and that's perfectly fine if they're going around, having a memo from the city saying, oh, here's what's going on, would you all along with sort of the traffic trust?
Gotcha.
Can you elaborate on that we did talk to Mr. Mumford?
Are you talking about Mr. Mumford?
Yes. I spoke to him personally, and, and this, his problem was due to those two different semi trucks at two different times. There was not, the street was never shut down, but I do understand that I did speak with him.
And I think everybody was in favor of the publicity. It was just the lack of communication was the, was the issue.
Yeah, I wanted to clarify, Mr. Mumford, his, effectively his business was not the film shoot. It was the, it was the trucks that got stuck. So, and we, and Miss Ty reached out to him and clarified with that with him, and he, he's understanding that that, that happens. Last thing I wanted to, I almost forgot. Mr. Cummins was very great to put together a flyer, so we've been talking about snow removal. And so we thought, I think it was a suggestion that came up here to have a notice given to merchants and, and businesses along Harrison Avenue, letting them know their obligation to remove not only the snow in front of their business, but to clear the ADA routes. So we have that, we have it completed, and we will be having the community service officers get that out so that we can get, hopefully, businesses that are not aware that it includes not just right in front of their business, but it includes the accessibility ramps as well.
What, oh, go ahead, Susan.
Oh, will that be mailed out as well?
Oh, we can hand deliver.
If there's any business owners though who say a building is unoccupied at this moment, how do we notify that building or business owner?
We can mail it as well. Yeah.
Yeah, I know of a building that is not occupied.
Okay. Well, that's easy to know. We can look up the property tax records.
They have not filled their sidewalk in seven years. I've been neighbors with them.
I, I think I may know who you're talking about. So yeah, this is the, and I also wanted to thank Mr. Cummins for our February newsletter, also. I, I think I may know who you're talking about. So yeah, this is the, and I also wanted to thank Mr. Cummins for our February newsletter, also getting some information out about, things about town. So there are suggestions, I took the suggestion, it's hard to put in something about the community center and the steering committee. So we will be working on that in the next month or so. And now I'm going to stop talking.
Wow, that report was like a meeting in itself. That was great. Thank you. Okay, moving along to our next presentation and discussion, PB Swims.
Hi, thank you for serving and thank you for putting PB Swims on the agenda. We're here tonight. You got a little handout packet and a hundred and seventy-eight thousand dollars is what this community has put aside, this local community, to renovate and reopen our existing aquatic center. And it's been shut down for three years and almost three months. And something in your handout that I stand corrected on and I got wrong was that the taxpayers are funding a two hundred and forty-six thousand dollar feasibility study. And that's not quite accurate. First of all, two hundred and forty-six thousand, that's what was approved. That's not necessarily what it's going to cost at the end. And then the taxpayers are partially funding it, but DOLA, Department of Local Affairs, is matching it from what I hear. DOLA gets its funding from the severance tax or mineral taxes. Climax pays into it, oil companies pay into it. So it's a tax, but it's not from my pocket and your pocket going in to pay for that feasibility study. And a hundred and seventy-eight thousand dollars is a long way off of both renovation or a new rec center. And PB Swims has been having a hard time getting capital money from funders because they say, well, you don't have money coming in to operate and maintain it. You know, if we give you this capital money and you renovate it and reopen it, and you don't have a dedicated source of income, well, it can close down in a couple of years. So that's why PB Swims asked the city last August to refer a measure to the ballot asking taxpayers and voters if they would vote for, at that time, we thought it was an increase in sales tax. But it would be for a, a tax, a dedicated tax to go to help renovate, operate, maintain, and eventually replace the aquatic center. And the board had some very valid concerns and the city lawyer advised against putting it on the ballot. And now PB Swims, one of the concerns was it was being rushed. And so we'd like to take, from now, there's I think about two hundred and forty-three days till the election. So we're beginning now to address these concerns, work through them, not Russia, find out from the public what are, are they willing to approve a pool tax? How much can the business owners bear? You know, if I, right now I'm paying six point nine percent on the dollar for hot dog sales. How, how much do I see, you know, it going up to pay for this pool? So PB Swims this winter too is gonna do some public engagement. We're gonna ask the voters, are you willing to approve this tax? We're gonna ask the vendors, the business owners. You know, we're gonna ask everybody for feedback. And so we're asking the city council for feedback as well. Your concern is that it was rushed, the valid concern. So now let's take the time to look at the ballot language, look at the petition language, look at the IGA language. We've talked to the school district superintendent and John Baker, who's the Board of Education president, and it's gonna take the city and the school district to have an IGA if this tax is to be implemented. And if the voters approve the tax and there's no plan for implementation, that was one of the valid concerns of the city council last August. So we just want to get this thing moving forward. And the, the school district asked that PB Swims put together an IGA and have the city weigh in on it and take it back to the school district so they can present it to their lawyer before they, and present it before the school board. Another thing about the school district is one of the reasons that we, PB Swims, the community that wants to renovate and reopen that swimming pool, one of the reasons we haven't received any institutional support is there was a question on whether or not that building would be demolished or not. So the school district applied for a best grant year before last to build a new school. And had they gotten the grant and the voters matched the grant with the bond issued and built a new intermediate school, the fate of the existing intermediate school and swimming pool would be, it would be either handed over to a governmental entity, sold to a private entity, or demolished. So rightfully so, the, the school board and the three county commissioners did not want to put money into something that may be demolished. Well, at a December meeting, I think it was December fifth, the school board voted to retain the gym and pool portion of that building. And so say they give the best grant third time, this go around, and the community votes to build a new school, the gym portion and the pool portion would not be demolished if they couldn't do anything with the classrooms. So that's where we are. The estimates that I put on your handout, twenty-four million for a new aquatic center comparable to what we've got, nothing special. That I'm sure has gone up. And then nine point nine million to renovate the whole aquatic center building, not just the pool portion. That's probably gone up from nine point nine million. But PB Swims, we are working on raising three and a half million so we can open that aquatic center so it's safe. That's replacing the pool, upgrading ADA and upgrading HVAC. And we are working on getting updated estimates for those items. I put a timeline on, you know, on this handout, and it's just the tip of the iceberg. PB Swims, we have a work cut out for us. There are so many steps in between these steps. These are just the, this is just an outline of stuff. We definitely need to get done and when we need to get it complete. So is what we're asking the city council is, please give us your feedback. Please work with us. We want, one, one of the concerns was the public's not real hip on voting for tax increases anyway. And if it's brought before the voters more than once, each time, the chances of a pathing decrease. So we want to do this right the first time. And so like I said, we ask that you work with us over the next few months and look at the language, because what goes on the ballot, it's really important that it's clear, it's concise, and you know, there won't be any unintended consequences because of the language. And same for the ITAs, you know, they've got to be clear, concise, and no unintended consequences. One of the other concerns was it was too narrow. PB Swims, we just wanted a pool tax. And a lot of other people in the community said, no, it better be for some other things, not just the pool tax. Well, we're sticking to our guns at this point on a specific pool tax. We've learned the hard way. The pool opened in nineteen seventy-five. It was built in nineteen seventy-four. And in nineteen ninety-three, the school district could no longer operate it and maintain it. So a nonprofit took it over. They operated it from ninety-three to ninety-nine. Then they had to give it up because they couldn't afford to replace the pipes and fix it. It was leaking because it is a stainless steel pool. So it was closed for five years. In two thousand and four, the community came together, the city, the county, the school district, and the citizens, and raised eight hundred thousand dollars to renovate it. There was an IGA at that point that the county would operate and maintain it for twenty-five years. So, and then December twenty twenty, they shut it down to repair it, and it has never reopened for three years, three months. So like I said, we've learned the hard way. Despite contracts, agreements, and increase of taxes, that wasn't enough. We need a dedicated source to the pool. So that's pretty much all I have, and please ask me questions. If I don't have the answer off the top of my head or in front of me, I will get back to you soon as I can.
Talk a little bit more about the feasibility study that the county has commissioned. It seems like we're going down a parallel path.
We are.
I'd be a lot more comfortable if we weren't parallel.
We are, man. Yeah, and I'm gonna let Wendy take that.
My name is Wendy Westfield. I'm the vice chair for PB Swims. I'm also on the steering committee for the RFP, the, the infill study you're beginning to. So I have a little insight on both, in both places. When I'm on the steering committee for the RFP, I'm not representing PB Swims, although I bring that knowledge to that steering committee. I'm a citizen that wants a pool. So the reason we are going down the path, the parallel path, which you are absolutely correct about, is that when I was in the steering committee, it looks like, first of all, we don't know that that ballot measure would pass either. So feasibility study is complete based on feedback from the community, all of that. Then that goes, I'm thinking, thinking goes to a ballot. There are so many things that are going to be on ballots from a property tax perspective, I believe. So, and actually that timeline could be very long. So what we are trying to do is achieve the goal of a pool. We are in total support of a new rec center. And we want a pool. But we don't know what's going to happen with that. So there's no need for, we don't feel comfortable stopping our efforts when a rec center is such a total unknown to us. It's so far in the future, even if feasibility study is the end of the CR that we can, we just got the DOLA grant. So that's where we're coming from. We're not opposed to a rec center by any means. We are just trying to provide the community with a pool, which is the consistent message that I know all of you have received. Demire.
Oh, so on that topic, is your proposal then that if the dedicated tax, which would be what, a sales tax?
Yeah.
If the dedicated tax were passed to fund repairs on an existing aquatic center, would your proposal be that the future rec center not include an aquatic center?
No. So what we're trying to do with the sales tax is just support what we're doing now. But the community itself has been asking, what, what are we doing? What is PDC with the Swims doing? What is our, what are our next steps? So what we're telling them is any money that we've raised so far and anything that we raise in the future, including funds from a sales tax, I'm not sure of the details how that would work, would go specifically to a pool in a rec center.
So they could fund first.
So the sales tax, that's what's important in the language. The sales tax, we'd have to put a pretty big percentage on hot dog sales to, to raise the nine million to renovate this pool. So the sales tax is to help renovate it, but it's mainly to operate and maintain it and have a fund, capital fund for replacement eventually. Now, that's where the language is so important in the ballot. So say we, so this new, a new rec center, you know, it's going to take a feasibility study. The results of the feasibility study are due out September. They're looking at different land sites. Please correct me if I'm wrong. I don't think they're looking at our existing building. And so first of all, the feasibility study results have got to come back. Then we've got to figure out funding. We've got to figure out, okay, where did the feasibility study say to have this? Does the county own this land? Who owns this land? Are there utilities on this land? Then there's design development. Then, you know, a lot of it is where's the money? So if this new rec center is going to cost twenty-three million to seventy million, it's going to take a while, I believe, to raise the money. Now, PB Swims has been told that, and I believe the people that are telling me this, there's investors, then they need to see a feasibility study, and so people believe, yeah, so people believe that this thing could happen in four years. If it does, I will be so happy. I will be the person in line to get a rec center pass. I will make a public apology to all the people I've talked smack about. I will, and I hope that happens. So if it does happen, what happens to that tax? I believe that tax we put in the language, it goes to operate and maintain a public, an authoritative public aquatic center. That's what our mission is about. It's a, a public, it's an affordable public aquatic center. And that's what we're working toward. We're not working against the EDC and the county commissioners. I want them to be successful. It's just, I, I'm not going to wait ten years for a pool, bottom line. And that's my own, that's not my family, that's not my employer, that's not PB Swims. I will not wait ten years for a public pool. So, one second. Brenna and Adam, I know you're both on the line. Could you correct anything I might have misstated regarding the feasibility study, please?
Can you hear me? This is Brenna. Well, first I want to correct that it's not just a rec center. It's going to be, it would include a rec center, a library, a senior center, and childcare and aquatic center. So it's more of a, it's going to be a community facility. I think that's the biggest correction that I would like to make. Regarding the, the results, we don't know exactly when we're going to start because we're waiting on all the contracts for, for DOLA. So meaning, so that means we don't know exactly when we're going to get, when everything is going to be finished. We're hoping to start in April at this point. And yeah, so that's all I can say. Adam, do you want to add anything?
No, that was, that was the big piece there. I think mostly to, to highlight that the county project and the feasibility study that's going along with that, yeah, is much broader than not just a pool, but not just a rec center, but most certainly includes those other shared services that Brenna mentioned, library, senior center, childcare. So yeah, I just would, would, would encourage kind of some, some thought on this if we do have multiple ballot initiative efforts kind of on a similar timeline. It's just something to think about. And really, that's the only additional piece I wanted to add. Thanks.
So Adam, I mean, was my understanding that we're going to have a ballot until 2025?
Well, that'll come up from whatever the results of the feasibility show. I mean, that's, that's part of why we're doing this study, to make sure we understand the true cost, not only of the infrastructure development, but what it would take to operate this over many years. And once we have that information, then there is a part of the study that's going to help us understand what financing options are available to us. I imagine one of those will be a community campaign for, for capital costs. And so what that looks like, I am, you know, we're paying experts to, to move that forward. So I will wait for that multi-week community engagement process to help reveal some of them.
Sorry for the diversion. I wanted to make sure we have the rest of the information here.
Well, thank you, Adam.
Forgive me if I missed something. So your first goal is to raise three point five million? And is that through the sales tax?
Yeah, um. No, no, we're, um, trying to raise that money through, um, donations and grants. Like I said earlier, it's, um, it's hard to get the funding when, um, we don't have a plan for operations.
Some of our grants have been declined or not approved because we didn't have a way to support the pool once it reopened.
But the, the minimum cost of the renovation is learned. By your own estimate, right?
That, um, that's for the entire building of the aquatic center and I can send you the, that's an updated estimate from last. May that the school district provided, um, to get the pool open and operating so it's safe. Uh, that's about three and a half million and I can send you the line items. That is an updated estimate as well, based on what the school district's contractors provided us and they worked off the. Original audit, twenty twenty audit. And then, uh, a civil engineer, a C F O. Um, and a, a group, another group, Joe was there, put, um. Put what was needed, uh, to safely reopen that.
So do you currently have a plan for the other six and a half million, I guess is what I'm.
Oh, to raise it?
Yeah.
Um, we have a loose plan. I could show you, uh, it's a ten-year plan. Yep, we do, and a budget, a ten-year budget. Yes. And I'd be happy if you can come up to you.
Yeah, so, uh, just a couple of thoughts and one question. I agree with the idea that we need to have short, medium, and long-term goals as a community. Um, and I would love if that conversation was more collaborative in its nature, um, specifically towards the feasibility study I'm speaking to. Um, I would love to have that opportunity for all of us as a community come together and have that conversation, um, as it's much bigger than just a pool. Um, our access to indoor recreation is completely lacking and is one of the big reasons why I push, um, for us to, uh, purchase a community center. Or what will eventually become these. All that said, I would also be interested in if we're doing the sales tax increase, having some type of data to come, um. To the approach with how much it would cost to operate and maintain a building of that type. Um, uh, specifically in aquatic center, of course, if this is what the sales tax is going to be approaching. Um, that way we have the numbers of what we're working with and we know what might be some of the gaps, uh, that need to be filled. Um, I can't imagine that a sales tax increase would fully, um. Cover it for the first few years of its operation. And I imagine it would need some type of assistance early on. But having those hard numbers in front of me would help me feel comfortable to be able to say, okay, you do have a long-term plan. You do understand how much it costs to operate the pool and the sales tax that we are putting, implementing won't be one of those. Oh, we didn't go high enough. Let's go higher next time, um, or we need to continue to go higher. Having that information is incredibly important. For the viability of the future of this, so that it doesn't fail or it to be in a situation ten years down the line where. We have to rely on passing another sales tax increase or any other tax increase, um, so that the pool continues to operate. Uh, and thank you for addressing some of the concerns I have regarding, uh, the funding potentially, um, and conflicting funding, um. For the rec center specifically, it's, as long as the ballot measure or the ballot language allows for the funding to be flexible in nature. Uh, that makes me feel comfortable in not duplicating, uh, tax and it could just be an increased tax. That said, I would hope that that is a very, very, um, big priority for this group. To be able to make sure that that ballot language allows for the flexibility of, um. The funds to be able to go to a rec center, um, eventually if that is ten, twenty years down the line. Um, like I said, short, medium, long-term goals, something we should definitely talk about. Certainly seems like the pool is a more medium to short-term goal rather than the long-term as opposed to a rec center. But that flexibility is incredibly important for me as a council member and as a community member.
Good. So we're getting a lot of requests. Will, will this be kinda consolidated for us? Cause I'm not gonna remember. Just whatever you guys want actually delivered to you.
I'd like to know a little bit more about the feasibility study. I went to the initial meeting and my understanding was that a variety of alternatives. Would be evaluated up to and including rehabbing the pool and aquatic center at the intermediate school. So all I heard tonight is it's quite a grandiose plan to include a pool and a library and a senior center. It all sounds great. It also sounds grandiose and very, very expensive. So.
What? I think I can do this, Brenna and Adam. What we could do is send you the proposal. Is that fair, Adam, or did I cross the line?
Uh, I've already forwarded the proposal on to Cisco and he, um, be aware of the, the meeting. So that, uh, there's no. There's no secrecy there. That can be fully shared. The R F P is, is still out there too. So all that can be, uh, viewed and, uh, reviewed and evaluated.
Can you just quickly summarize what the alternatives are to be considered in the F S?
Uh, the alternative, the way it was written is that another, uh, Lake County site. Um, you know, the, we had a couple of sites that were county-owned properties that were, uh, listed and we left. A little bit of flexibility without naming any sites specifically, that there could be consideration for another. Site in Lake County for this to happen. And, you know, with a thirty-seven week process and a pretty significant, uh, community engagement process. If you go to the proposal, pages forty-two to twenty-six kinda lists that out. Uh, you can see where there will be, uh. Ample opportunity for community input on where that site might be or any, any thoughts related to, uh, this very large project. But we did not define it specifically, so.
So, so the alternatives are all about location and not about what's included. In the rec center. It sounds like it's just a very comprehensive rec center. Costly rec center.
Community center, you know, it's not, rec center isn't really the term that we use internally because. We've got multiple departments involved, including the library, senior center, and childcare opportunities that the O C C wanted to have in there. Um, so I also don't want to say community center, cause I don't wanna go, uh, we're just following Christian here and I'm not gonna. Uh, confuse the terms of what the city is up to as well. What we decide to call it at the end, uh, can be determined by the community process.
All right. Well, that's different than what I understood from the one meeting I attended about the feasibility study. So that's informative. Thank you.
Are there any other questions or discussion?
I, I just have one. I know I already directed this question to you earlier, Jane, but, you know, in. In a partnership with the city, like what you are seeking. Would, and the city having its own community spaces that it would also like to support. While I appreciate the narrow focus of your proposed ballot initiative. Would P P Swims be, um, open to in this partnership? Having a broader ballot language that would preserve a certain percentage for. Maintenance operation of the pool wherever it be located. And additional, you know, for other community spaces as, you know.
I think that's what I, I think what I can do was only to be flexible, let the versions be flexible. And, you know, because we are five oh one C three, I can't believe I said that, right? Don't get the numbers backwards. Because we are truly I R S five oh one C three, um, we want to make sure whatever we've collected, whether it's through a sales tax. Or through our, um, fundraising, it goes to a pool. So, or, or whatever format it takes to support whatever else is going on in the city.
Well, I think in, in Cisco has forwarded the. Language from the feasibility request to all of us. Thank you. Um, I'm wondering if, eh, at a, eh, eh, at like a soon. Council meeting, if we should just like amongst us have a discussion about options for. How, or if the city should be involved and how they might move forward with this if we should. Cause it's, it's an awful lot tonight. I'd like to read some more about the feasibility study. I'd like to cogitate on all the stuff that, um, that you deliver. And I think I, I would just like in a, uh, another setting where we can decide, um, formally how to move forward.
And we can get you the information we requested. Um, you might want that before your meeting, so.
I'll send it tomorrow.
Thank you, Jane. Yeah, sure.
And when we discuss it next, I think it's really important to hear from the school district. Because they're a major part of this. So I would wanna.
Yeah, that's why I'm, I'm wondering if, uh, at the expense of doing what we did to ourselves during budget season, it might be good to have a work session. Because that's a little more, um, amenable to doing the back and forth than question and answer. In having the right people literally at the table, rather than having it be more formal. So I would say. Why don't we, uh, the mayor and I can talk and what we'll do is propose, uh, maybe a work session date.
May I throw out a suggestion?
Sure, absolutely.
Um, maybe perhaps we start thinking about having subcommittees for city council so that we can have.
Well.
These will, um, focus on these differences.
Look how fancy we're getting.
I actually really like that idea.
Me too.
I mean, sorry, Christian.
So I would say that we can. Uh. I would say, uh, let me check with our, uh, city attorney to find out the correct format for this. This one might not need to be a subcommittee. It could be more of a task force. The difference is. A subcommittee would be a standing committee and a task force is, um, limited to a certain, uh, scope and task. And once that has been accomplished, then the subcommittee or the, the committee would cease to need to exist. So let me find out. Uh, I would propose it be more of a, uh, task force rather than a standing subcommittee, but the same concept, absolutely. And then find out how we can, can we just. Uh, we haven't engendized this formal action tonight, but what we would probably need to do is put it on the agenda as creation of that and take a little quick vote.
It'll be interesting then.
Okay.
I'm an ex program manager. We call them tiger teams.
Sounds like it needs a uniform.
We, we, we won't require costumes, but we can, we can call wherever we want. We don't have to dress up like a tiger.
Okay, okay. Thank you very much. That was informative.
Thank you very much. Thanks for serving and thanks for rodeo committee.
We are actually pretty dang close to being on time. Let's hear from the Broken Arrows rodeo man. Thank you so much.
Thank you guys all for, for giving us an opportunity to come and talk with you. Uh, for those of you that don't know me, I'm Hannah Harney. This is Hillary Holmer, and we are the leaders of the Broken Arrows four H Club. Um, a little history behind this is a couple of years ago, so. Back up a little bit. For those of you that don't know what four H is, it's a leadership club and, um, life skills club for, for kids eighteen, eighteen. And it's been around for over a hundred years. Um, and we do have one in Lethal and it has been around for many, many years in Lethal as well. So it's not new. Um, it's the Broken Arrows four H Club. And that's where we have gotten our name from. A couple of years ago, we had our projects, um, being out to show the public, for the kids, um. But then to demonstrate what they do and what, you know, to give the community an opportunity to, to see, you know, this is, this is four H. This is what the kids have done. And it was at the courthouse and one of the projects got stolen. So it, the young man took it with stride and I brought him bravely for that. But it was just really sad. So as a club, we were like, okay, what do we do to be able to show the community our projects and what we're doing? Look at it getting stolen. Uh, and so one of the, the parents came up with the idea of doing the rodeo. Broken Arrows, um, four H Club. Raised money and they're the ones that put in the rodeo grounds many years ago. And those rodeo grounds are not been used. For at least ten years, I'm guessing. Um, and so his idea was, why don't we bring the rodeo back? Why don't we have a, an opportunity there for those kids to be able to show off their projects? Why don't we give this to the community and give back to the community and, you know, have some entertainment? Uh, so Hillary and I were like, all right, that was an idea. And here we go. And we're just starting a rodeo a little back, um. Because we were so small for so long and they're growing rapidly right now. Um, our kids actually take their projects and go to J P County Fair. And we show at J P County, which is great. It's fun. It's a great experience. But it's not Cisco and his family. It's not Jane going, hey, you did a great job. Oh, let's get, you know, I just think they're buying a hot dog. It's not the local connection that the adults can be proud of the kids that we're raising together as a community. These kids are going down to J P County and no one knows who they are. And so we really wanna bring that home and create a bigger sense of community by having the fair here. So, um, yeah, so that's, that's the history of it. That's correct. Um, to do that, we've done some research and we actually had a rodeo, um, company reach out to Felicia. And thus she knew that we were heading this up and like working on this. Um, but it got the ball rolling a lot faster than what Mia had anticipated. And we're very proud to, to say that, that we're working on that. Um, it's gonna take about sixty thousand dollars to do a whole blown rodeo, one day at a time. For a one day, one day. Um, needless to say. Four H Club does not have that money to be able to do that. And after, we had to make our subcommittee, not really subcommittee, we had to make another entity. Because the four H program does not quit on these type of events. Uh, J P County, they have their own rodeo committee, their own fair committee and that and stuff. Uh, so we are currently under the, the Lake County Community Fund. They have graciously accepted us under their reins. Um, so everything is, you know, five oh one C three. And, um. We currently have twenty thousand dollars that we've raised thus far. Um. We can do, get away with just a bull riding event for about fifty thousand, but we're like, well. If we're fifty thousand, we should try to really push for that and reserve those funds to be able to put on a whole rodeo. We are at twenty thousand, five thousand. That is a grant that doesn't need to be used by the end of May. Um, therefore we are putting on a fair with a mock rodeo. This year we're gonna have like full needle barrel racing and hippity hop. You know, stuff, you know, for the horse, horse stuff. And then, um, like haystacking competitions and kind of just fair, fair games. You know, road, throw the, the hoop over the bull's rings and that kinda stuff. It's gonna be a fun event. That's what we're doing this year with the grant money. But what we're here for is to bring it to the city to see if you guys would be willing to donate any monies towards a full-blown rodeo. For the future, whatever that will be. Questions?
Yeah, I, I have one.
Yeah.
I know y'all mentioned doing a various amount of activities, um. And one thing that I will note is that the fair housing fair, um, does also do some more like circus fair activities. But it'd be interesting to see, um. Just making sure that the type of activities aren't duplicative. Um, I'm in the housing coalition, so I'm more than happy to. Um, pass along that information of what type of activities we're doing. I can't imagine there'd be too much, but we did, for example, have a petting zoo there, uh, last year. So. Um, I would be interested in that sense, just to have, uh, that alignment of offering something, uh, that community members can. Come and enjoy in different ways and different activities.
Sure. It's good. So the state, this fair that we're putting on this year is, is a preliminary thing, you know. We need to reuse those, that grant, grant monies that we were blessed with. And so we're, we're putting it on, you know, for that. Um, we're gonna have a four H booth. We've got food vendors. We've got a cannibal bowl. We already have, um, kids. We already have um kids events scheduled not for this year, but for next year. And um other 4H clubs are gonna come down. We're hoping to have like a general event. Um this year, we put an invitation out to the Westerners. I'm not sure if any of you are familiar with the Westerners. Um I know that Lori is.
I don't even wanna be a Westerner.
Westerners is a kid program, and they are over a thousand kids strong up in the grand range. And they do basically trick writing. So they're doing flaming whips and all the stunt writing where they're twisting upside down like the horse was going around the arena. And we're have reached out to them to come put on a show for us as one of our main events for this fair. One of the things we do wanna talk about is that we hope to be self-sufficient. We don't wanna keep coming back. We need to get our feet on the ground and through ticket money, through fundraising and through all the other avenues to earn money during the fair. Make this sustainable so that once we get going, it's good. We don't have to come back again. We don't have to keep asking for sponsorship. It should, as if we look at this part, if we look at um Chaypee County, it's all self-sustaining. They don't have to keep going back and fundraising because it's used first. So that's our long, short, long term goal. Our medium goal is to get to that point. We just gotta get our cleanup here under us and get going.
So are you looking for the city to contribute at one of these sponsorship levels?
One of the sponsorship levels, um the top one is five thousand and beyond. Um so that's kind of, you know, up to you guys how much you would like to donate, if any. Um most people have done the five thousand. Um right now, with without asking the V O C C, they've done five thousand. Um we're hoping to go back and get an additional five thousand from them. Excel Energy has put in five thousand. We have pending one to Climax. Um we've not got my response back from them yet. We've got this.
Not ranked, yeah.
Um the realtors have donated some, the trains donated some. No other thing. But so we've got about twenty thousand, five thousand, which is gonna have to be used this year. Um we've got other grants and stuff that we are also applying for. Um but sixty thousand is is a reaching amount. It's gonna take some time to get there. But anything that can help us get towards that goal is greatly appreciated.
So I would remind.
Yeah. So uh sounds great. And um can you speak more about ticket sales and journey mission?
Sure.
And what are your thoughts are about that?
Sure.
How much money you imagine it could be?
Right, so for the fair that we're gonna be doing this year, um it is gonna be a ten thousand, a ten dollar per day. It's gonna be a ten dollar ad admission fee into that. Uh there's also gonna be a beer tent and then, like I said, food better. So there's gonna be things within that that will cost money as well. The cannibal bowl will cost additional monies as well. Um and then, once it's the full blown rodeo, at this point in time, we're planning on charging twenty dollars ahead.
Hmm. Would you consider um a more of a sliding scale? Like ten, even ten dollars for a lot of large families, that'd be just a little primitive, just a thought.
Right. And I get that, that it's, we're trying to raise money to get this to be a self-sustaining event. So if we do a sliding scales, then that's kind of wrong to do. Um. That's true. And we will, that's something we can certainly consider. Um maybe one of the thoughts that we could do is, you know, do a discount for for kids, you know, at an age of five.
I know somebody that could do the price modeling.
Christian, will we answer your question about how it's gonna be different than the housing fair?
Yes, I I mean, the event that you're doing specifically is.
Right. I mean, it's whole affair, but it's more.
Four.
And it's like a cow and bear.
We we did have a cannibal bowl there too, but we won't.
You can never have two.
I think the fair is.
Yeah, yeah, that's something.
And we're busy scheduled for June fifteenth, so we're trying to do it earlier in the season when we don't have as much. Trying to get people, okay, the snow's melted. Let's all come out as a community and get together. Um we don't have the barbecue going on anymore, is my knowledge. I think that that's fizzled out. Um but try to bring the community together. Try to bring outsiders that are already coming up to visit the area. Let's try to get their money, you know? Uh bring them into town so that they can help, you know, all the all the companies that are in town as well. So that's the goal.
Yes.
One last question. The sixty thousand dollar overall budget for putting on a full rodeo next year, does that include infrastructure costs like insurance?
Yes.
So all of that is included in?
All of that is included in that. Stock, it's timers, it's wrang- uh wranglers, pickup men, announcers.
It's the pens, the transportation.
The pens are already on, we already have the pens and it includes the permit fees, it includes the ambulance rentals and the safety. Um security guards and it's a whole community.
Thank you. Um I was just doing a quick search. I couldn't really find anything. So this is a committee. Is it the parent organization different? Or am I misunderstanding it? And the uh Broken Arrows is its own organization? And what type of organization are you?
So it so 4H itself cannot sponsor a rodeo.
Right.
And so our 4H club cannot sponsor a rodeo. But we can have a community fair, you know, county fair, and have that to help the 4H club. So we're we're under Lake County Community Fund. We're considered a social club.
Okay.
Right.
So you're under.
Similar names will help brand 4H to it.
I see. Okay.
That'll.
Yes, uh being under the community fund kind of gives me a good idea.
4H is under Colorado State University Adventure.
Yeah.
And that's a member Lake County Community Fund. So two separate fiscal responsibilities. But we wanted to make sure that since it's going to be the parents of the 4H youth that are hopefully wanting to be continuing the fist, that that is something that's going to tie in. So that's why we kept it with the Broken Arrows is to the tie it all in together. Yeah, we tie it together.
And I just for my reference, um have you had that? I I can't imagine you haven't, but um you've had that conversation with the community fund about selling um tickets and that model of operation? And that's totally clear with them?
Yeah.
Uh it sounds like you got the fair component and the rodeo component, mostly fair component this year.
Correct.
Do you plan on maintaining that?
Yes. Absolutely. Building on it.
Yeah.
Making it hopefully long-term, two-day event, a bull riding night on Friday night to get people in. So we have that overnight stay. And then Saturday a whole day, so that they are around town for a longer duration of time.
Mm-hmm. Any comments or questions?
So typically, how this would work is we would decide if and how much? And then staff would draft a resolution for another time. That's how we've done. Decide anything. This is a presentation, so I would just ask for guidance on a resolution. So we found that this has been working pretty well, that we have a presentation. And then if council feels as though they want staff to bring back a resolution, I can do that. And even get fancy and put it on a consent agenda. So if 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 council would like us to draft the resolution and you know, if we can just get some guidance on the amount, that would be fantastic.
So I would like council to keep in mind that this year in our budget, we have set aside twenty thousand dollars in our operating contingency to answer requests such as this. Um we are have spent six thousand of that thus far roughly.
And being that the rodeo isn't going to be happening this year.
Mm-hmm.
Um you know, if if it's helpful to, you know, not do it this year, but do it next year or or something of that sort. We are open to anything, but without coming to you and doing a presentation, you don't even know.
Yeah, this was very helpful.
So are you getting any money from the county?
Yeah, we've already gotten five thousand, and we're gonna go back and try and try to get one. We're gonna be guys last time still here, so we're going back this this whole year now.
The fairgrounds are um possession.
The fairgrounds, the land itself is a county possession. Um it is very unclear, being that the Broken Arrows 4H Club is the one that put in the rodeo arena. As to who that belongs to? Nobody can seem to answer that question. Um but yes, I think I think basically the county thinks that they have absolved it all.
How do people feel about directing staff? In amount, given our current finances.
I just have one question. Last fall, when we were going through the budget operation, there was some discussion about trying to have a rolling schedule when nonprofits become in the approach city council. Uh we've already gotten three requests. It's early in the year, and so we can just spend our contingency fund down. And then, you know, June rolls around and all of a sudden we don't have anything, even if we, even if there's a worthy knockoff. But so I guess I'd I'd rather look at it more holistically. Yeah, I think that was the point of having that discussion. Uh I thought the council decided to take things on a case-by-case basis for twenty twenty four. We can, you know, some communities do that where you have uh different entities apply for the funds and and a a subcommittee vets them and says, okay, this is our pot of money. These are our recommended, you know, uh entities, and this is how much. And with my understanding, the council did not want to do that this year. And so we have, just when people have needed uh funds, we just have them come and present. But I do think going forward, having a particular time of year where you can consider them all at once makes more sense.
Good. I like that idea. I wonder if we could still recommend it for twenty four.
Yes, it would've been better if we had done it before people started coming and asking. Because people have already asked and gotten money, had an unfair advantage, I think. Uh but yes, my recommendation is that maybe we look at it definitely for twenty twenty five and we can. Uh I think you all remember some of the commitments we made at the end of last year were because we had some additional funds at the end of the year and we had one-time asks. So keeping in mind that some of those might not be coming back.
Mm-hmm. Well, I do like the idea of helping them together. We have already set a precedent this year for individual requests, so. I share twenty twenty five.
That's, oh, I'm fully in support of doing that for twenty twenty five. It's a little bit more work because we need to have criteria and a process and a vetting committee and everything. But I think it is better than the one-off system we have now. And I prefer me. Then you have generally, it's not as guaranteed we'd still have one-off press. They're still gonna happen. But for the most part, you would ask entities to come at one point in time during the year and make a decision. And I'll tell you, it is probably one of the most difficult meetings you're gonna have in the year.
Hmm.
I'm I'm just gonna give you a heads up on that, because we're not gonna have any money to fund all the things that we are asked to do, and they're all gonna be amazingly worthy causes. So it's a it it it's a hard decision.
Mm-hmm.
Go ahead, Susan.
Yeah, um is your request more for next year than this year?
Yes.
So could we consider it in our twenty twenty five budget process rather than trying to pass a resolution now?
We would be fine if you guys chose to do that. Um we would need to know like how much by like the middle of February so that we can plan accordingly, because we do wanna keep this as a spring, early spring event.
February?
Right.
Oh, our budget process is generally just October.
Yeah, that that would be totally fine. We would just need to know so that we can, at the rodeo company, start planning accordingly and so we can plan accordingly for that.
I think that's an excellent idea. And I think so too. Uh but I would like some not only for a guarantee, but an assurance that you look at your pricing structure a little bit, because a ten dollar, a flat fee doesn't seem like it would draw in enough people that we would want.
Sure.
Okay.
This is gonna be the first note for our twenty twenty five budget.
Wow.
I, yeah. And so we made it, we made it, uh you know, two months and some change. So thank you.
Okay, thank you so much. Let's take some action.
Yeah.
We are just a little bit behind, but not horribly so. Trans Rockies Run Temporary Use Permit. It's sad.
Yep.
Right.
Hello, comfortable. Um this is the Trans Rockies T U P. This this year is, or yeah, this year will be the seventeenth year. We have been in a, they've been in a three-year permit. We do have Kevin McDonald here. I see you, Kevin. Um with the Trans Rockies US LP. Um this is one of our most, this gentleman literally sent me this T U P request after his event in August. So this is one of our most organized events. I love this event. It's very straightforward. It's very uh not much impact to the city. We have the biking and parking lanes on the east side of Harrison closed about Fifth Street, right in front of City on a Hill Coffee. And that's where they, I, as you know, this is a stage race, which this is just a particular credit to Leadville. Um it's an event we've had for several years, so I'm not gonna go into all the details. Uh if you have any questions, Kevin, do you have something you wanna add to this? Very exciting event.
Um you're the first person in my twenty-five years who said I was the most organized, so so thank you. No, it's it's a, it's a, it's a cool event, because we start in Buena Vista and we finish in Beaver Creek. And of course, people from all, we have people from all over the world. So Leadville's kind of is iconic because of, you know, the Leadville One Hundred Trail Race. So everybody knows Leadville. So even though we only spent one night in Leadville, everyone loves, you know, we camp at Lighter Field, and then people walk down to Harrison. Um it's a small event. We only have three hundred runners, but they usually get to camp around noon or one o'clock, walk down to Harrison for lunch, then come back to camp. And then um then we start the very next morning on Harrison, and then we head to Nova Guide. So we're pretty much self-sufficient. We bring in our own toilets, our own shower truck, so we cause minimal impact to the town. I know the town's very busy during August, so we uh wanna be self-sufficient and not cause any problems. So I think for seventeen years, we've been pretty good stewards um throughout the state of Colorado. Um and we, yeah, like I said, all the participants love, that's one of their favorite stops, is seeing Leadville for the first time. Uh so and it's kind of a cool start. Can we start right on Harrison? Uh we blocked that one. Uh we blocked one lane for for from, I believe, six thirty in the morning to nine, and then we pack everything up and we're gone, so. Um and we just basically stay in that, sorry, we stay in that bike lane now, the new bike lane. We stay in the bike lane, so. Um we've had no issues with with traffic or, you know, angry residents per se, so that's good to. I know a lot of locals, um there's so many events in August, so or in July and August, but we try to be minimal impact. And uh we've never had any issues um in seventeen years.
This is, uh I noticed a three-year permit. Have they previously done a three-year permit?
Last year was the year of their three-year permit, and that's why we're just requesting another three-year permit for them.
Yes, it's good.
Uh pardon me if I missed it, um but is there anything about outhouses downtown or do outhouses get set up?
The porta potties?
Yeah.
We don't do outhouses anymore.
I was gonna try. I thought my bad yard is not usable.
Porta potty, according to historic standards.
They have to have a slope for it.
I'm not putting my HPC hat on.
City of Ranout.
Kevin, didn't you say, do you set up any porta potties along that route?
Yes, we have porta potties at Lighter Field and porta potties at the Sixth Street Gym, because that's where we we do our presentations there at night on Tuesday night.
So yes, they do. They bring in everything themselves. That's why I say they're so organized.
Other questions or comments?
And I would entertain a motion.
Edwards moves to approve the temporary use permit for the annual Trans Rockies run on August fourteenth, twenty twenty four, from six AM until nine AM. With the attached findings, set approval being good for three years through twenty twenty six. With the attached findings, set approval being good for three years through 2026. In my last seconds.
We'll call please.
Councilor Hill?
Yes.
Councilor Thomas?
Yes.
Mayor Green?
Yes.
Councilor McArthur?
Yes.
Councilor Bette?
Yes.
Councilor Evans?
Yes.
And Councilor Lee?
Yes.
Thank you all. Thank you, Kevin.
Thank you very much. Have a great night.
Night. Yay. Okay, next. Thank you, guys. Oops, where's that going? So next, I have a question for council. Typically, when we have long meetings, we take a break around 8:00. We have the demolition certificate of appropriateness to hear next, which who knows still about that? Are people okay waiting until after the COA for break? Okay, then let's roll. All right, this is a public hearing procedure, and so I have some things to say. Good evening, my name is Dana Green and I am the mayor of the city of Leadville. This is a public hearing before city council to consider a certificate of appropriateness by Catherine Wright for demolition of a structure at the property known as 109 Oak Street. When the public hearing is opened, I will first attend to some preliminary housekeeping matters. I will then ask for staff to discuss highlights of the staff report. Followed by the applicant to make a brief presentation of her proposal, followed by public comments from members of the public in attendance. The applicant will have an opportunity for rebuttal, which is the applicant's opportunity to respond to any comments made by members of the public. After rebuttal, I will close the public comment portion of the public hearing and allow council members an opportunity to ask questions. Once the public comment portion of the hearing is closed, we will not accept further public comments unless it is in response to questions posed by the council with the applicant and city staff. Staff will have an opportunity for class, clarification and rebuttal, which is staff's opportunity to respond to any comments made by the applicant or members of the public. At the conclusion of our questioning, the council will deliberate and render a decision, which could include a continuation of the hearing. This public hearing is quasi, quasi-judicial, which means that we have to follow certain procedural requirements to establish a record. And for this reason, it is important that when you speak, you identify yourself and state your physical address. If you would like to submit written materials, please understand that the city will have to hold on to these materials for at least 30 days after city council renders its decision. Anyone have any questions about the public hearing procedure? Okay. I will now open the public hearing for 109 Oak Street Certificate of Appropriateness for Demolition, applicant Kathy Wright. At this time, I ask the city council members to disclose any ex parte communication. None? Thank you. All right, well, staff, please present the report highlights.
Good evening, mayor and council. For record and the Zoom participants, I'm Chayton LaShaw, the planning director for the city of Leadville. So this is a, a request for a certificate of appropriateness for a substantial modification, which would be demolition of the historic structure shown on the screen. This is a project that was reviewed by the Historic Preservation Commission last week, and they have a recommendation to you tonight. And so I'll give a staff report similar to what was given to the Historic Preservation Commission. This structure is located on Oak Street, kind of the southeast part of town. It's, it's worth noting that this, most of you probably know the history of this area. The second, third street, Chestnut Street here is, in the 1880s, those were, are more of our commercial core. It was not Harrison Avenue, so to say. So it's important to note the context of that, you know, the, the railroad lines definitely had a significant factor into the density of commercial activity in that area. And this historically was a commercial structure. I'll kind of show you the area of the site on Oak Street and then survey of the property as we zoom in a little bit more. This is approximately a 30 by 40 structure, and it fronts the Oak Street right away. This lot was recently combined in 2020, so it is, those two lots are combined in one. This is what the structure looks like today. It is in disrepair and it's not currently occupied. If we look at the historic sandblower map, so these are original fire insurance rate maps that, we have a series of these from the 1880s through the 1930s. It provides a lot of information about the purpose of structures, kind of the context of the area. They provide a lot of intel information like how, how tall the building was, et cetera. So I'll kind of scroll through some of these maps, but it's worth noting that the structure is shown on the 1883 map, which is our first map, so we know it was constructed by at least 1883. And it was originally shown as a two, a two-story structure in the front, one story in the rear, uses a meat shop. And through the years, I'll just quickly scroll through these maps. You can kind of see some of the changes in the building and the area, but it was used as a hotel, called Milwaukee Hotel. It was later used as a boarding house and a meat shop. And then in the 1930s, it was, this is the last map that we have, it was used as a dwelling. And the, the, the history since the 1930s is a bit unclear, but it has been unoccupied for quite some time. But it's approximately a 2,400 square foot structure, two-story. And I'd like to get into some of the code criteria that's listed in the code for, for demolition approval of a demolition application. If you'd like to follow along, you can go to page 49 of your packet where I've listed the, all the applicable code criteria. It's worth noting, before we kind of get into the code criteria, what the council is responsible for tonight. And that is making a decision based on code compliance. So we, the code does specifically say that the council must make a decision based on code compliance and you must make findings. So it's the applicant's job to demonstrate that they're, that they are complying with the code. So they have an application, that material's included in your packet. So the code criteria is that they demonstrate compliance with, with this code. So in other words, we're not making a decision on the, the, who the applicant is, what they do here in town, their financial capability, et cetera. So I'm gonna leave this picture on the screens, we just have a visual reference as I kind of go through some of the code criteria. There are four main criteria and there are some sub-criteria. I am gonna summarize this, we don't have to read everything word for word. The first criteria is for demolition, is that the building is not structurally sound. The applicant has provided a letter from the Lake County Building Department's inspector. He was a qualified inspector, and they are in writing stating that the building is unsafe. And that in order to demol, sorry, in order to restore the building in any way, that they would have, they would have basically have to start from the top and work their way down. And doing that would be, could definitely be unsafe, so they don't see a safe way to make the building safe. They are communicating that they do think there is a way to, to make this building come back to life. But that would essentially be what they're stating as a complete dismantlement and reconstruction of the building, which essentially is demolition itself. So, we, our staff is finding, the HPC is finding that applied criteria one, which is that the applicant is demonstrating the building is not structurally safe through that letter from, from the Lake County Building Inspector. The second criteria, this is really the, this is really the key issue for discussion tonight, is whether or not the building can be rehabilitated for a reasonable beneficial use. Those are the keywords. We can, we can break that down a little bit, but the inspector, as I mentioned, did provide a letter that talks about complete dismantlement and reconstruction and the extreme difficulty in, in safely restoring this building. I think it's important to, to look at what the definition of rehabilitation is, and this is included in your, in your packet. But, but the definition in our code, the keywords are of the definition for rehabilitation is compatible use. So can this building be made into a compatible use? If we, we do not have a definition for use, but I think it's important to also look at what does it mean to use a building? That is not defined, staff's interpretation of using a building would be that a building could receive a certificate of occupancy. So that means that the building could be safely occupied. So if the building department could say someone can go inside this building legally and, and use this for, for a variety of purposes. Now, the building code has a variety of occupancies, so it doesn't necessarily mean just residential or just commercial. There are building code occupancies that are related to historic buildings, museums, buildings that have, that are historic in character that are not being looked in or used for a commercial purpose. So the keyword use being that someone could safely occupy a building. So the key question regarding criteria two is whether the council finds that dismantlement and reconstruction of the building is the only way to rehabilitate this building into a compatible use. The HPC's answer to that was no, dismantlement and reconstruction is not the only way to use this building. And they listed a variety of, I think, ways, ways they would prefer to see this building, this building used in the future. But, and staff would, if, if council were to find that the only way for this building to be used is to be completely dismantled, then staff would say that no, it does not comply with this criteria, this criteria number two. That's the main, the main item for consideration, main criteria for consideration tonight. Criteria three is that the structure cannot be moved. I think it's fair to say that if the, the structure had the structural integrity to move it, then it should be rehabilitated in place. One of the key considerations for historic preservation is site context. So if you were to move a building like this, that historically fronted, it was a commercial building that, that fronted a street that had a lot of commercial activity, if you were to move this building to the, the back of the site, it would lose its, its historical context. If you were to move it somewhere else in town, especially in, in an area that was more residential area, it would also lose its context. So it's a bit of a no-brainer for staff and, and staff found that it does comply with that criteria. The last criteria, criteria four is regarding mitigation. And the key, it has some sub-criteria, but the main one is visual character. So does demolition of this building, does it mitigate the, the impacts to the visual, visual character of the area? And staff's, staff would offer for consideration that that is, that is very subjective. So visual character, so someone might say that, you know, if you had informed or someone who's trained and, and looking at historic buildings and historic districts, they may see this building and they say, okay, this building helps me interpret what this area used to be. I can tell this is a commercial type structure, and this was probably located in a commercial type area. And that can, can, that can be assisted by other buildings in the area. And someone else might say, this is a dilapidated building and I like modern structures and this building should, should come down because I, I see it as a nuisance. So I think that's, so staff is a bit neutral on that and you just kind of have to have every, every council member, if I have your own opinion on that.
No.
Oh, that was not me.
No, it's the computer that makes its own.
If it goes up, I can start over. I shouldn't do that.
So I'll wrap up here, so we at least get into a good checkpoint here. But the HPC's, Historic Preservation Commission's recommendation was denial of this application. And, and they were supportive of the findings that are included in your packet. Staff would support the HPC's recommendation and, and staff kind of withheld the recommendation until we had an in-depth discussion about whether or not dismantlement was the only way for this property to be and reconstruction was the only way for it to be used. But as we included some guiding questions for both the commission and for council in your packet, but since those, those questions were answered, staff's recommendation is now.
I'm excited.
For the United States Department of Labor grant.
Connects.
For the United States Department of Labor grant.
There's so much you're sending us, don't have one direction.
And when you're comfortable, this doesn't matter.
Oh, thank you for having me. That's one.
Sorry if I'm interrupting the public hearing, but I cannot see or hear anything from city hall right now. I don't know if I'm the only one with that issue on Zoom.
You're not the only one.
Okay.
Can't see or hear us?
Okay, yeah. There we go, there you are.
Oh, you were not going to show it, that's why. I mean, you did one.
Okay, thank you.
Are we back online?
We lost you probably for five minutes at least.
Well, we took a break for that five minutes, because the computer decided it just had to restart. So I appreciate everyone's patience. We're gonna get back to business here on this COA. Chayton Luthen, he had just concluded his remarks and the computer shut down, and so we took a five-minute break. Nothing has happened since we dipped out. But what I'd like to do is come back to the COA and ask the applicant for a presentation.
Sorry, I was, I was 98%.
98%. That's what.
So is I. So as I mentioned, the HPC's recommendation to the city council is to not to not approve this application. Uh, the, I have motions uh included in your packet. I'm sharing them on the screen, the motion, motion optional, uh, motion options. We're both approval in denial and then uh and each of those motions have their respective findings and that's on page thirty-nine of your packet. That's a hundred percent finished.
Okay. Thank you.
All right, would the applicant like to make a presentation, please?
Yes, I'm going to speak. Uh, both my wife and I own the property and uh, uh, thank you Chapin for your presentation. But uh, we bought the property eight years ago and every year our property tax increased one hundred and twenty percent, a thousand percent in seven years, which most even though property tax in Colorado's average is three point six percent. So I don't know what's going on there, but next year's property tax arrival frightens us, so we must sell the property. The property, we bought the property because we love that barn and we live right across the street from it. Uh, but now we have to sell it. But uh, the real estate, three different state agents we spoke with said that for to have the barn on the property is a liability, that it will decrease the value anywhere from forty thousand to seventy thousand dollars. So we're stuck with in increasing hundred and twenty percent property tax every year. Uh, the loss of of in of income by having a barn on the property. And finally, addressing Chapin's uh comment that it's rehabilitable. Uh, at what cost? It has to be minimal, half a million dollars and more. To what, to what point would it be rehabilitable to a garage? Certainly not to a business. I think it would cost, I think it would be exorbitant to repair that to a a business. We don't want to take, we don't want to take the barn down. Uh, before, there had been testimony here, uh, before the uh historic committee that by three different neighbors, including Steve, that the property uh is a liability. Uh, we can't get liability insurance on it, but uh uh, every time we have a windstorm, I I need to pick up shingles and siding out in the street. Uh, so the roof is not there. Uh, the minimum would be to put on the roof. We don't have the money to do that. So that is why we are petitioning to take down the property. I know none of that addressed the four uh necessities that you you prefer to look at. But I just wanted to, my wife and I wanted to present to you all the reason for uh all of this happening. First and foremost, the city property debt. Kathy, do you want to, would you care to comment?
Yes, is it, is it okay to do that now?
Yes, Kathy, go ahead.
All right, am I talking loud enough?
Yes.
All right, I would like, thank you. Um, thank you, everyone, for listening to this. Uh, my uh presentation is more in a conversation here. I think when Chapin lays out the four things that you guys are to look at and number two is the most significant. And that's regarding rehabilitation and reasonableness. Um, Anne Schneider had given us initially, when we had to fill out this application, uh, she'd given us the name of this man who did the uh, the code, the the inspection. And so we, we looked at his report, we sent it to Anne, Anne sent it on to Chapin and and it looked, not only did it look accurate to what we saw, but I'd like to read just in brief the first, the first HPC commissioner that spoke last week, and there's no name next to him, it's just advisory member number one. He, he said there is ceiling damage. He says the foundation needs res- resupply. The roof is compromised, the exterior is in rough shape. Um, floors are gone in some of the rooms. Now, at what point does, does the reasonableness of fixing that up exceed uh someone's money to do that? And I I kind of disagree that when I asked the uh HPC, what, what did they think it was reasonable for this rehabilitation? Nobody argues that this is an historic piece of um of history here. But at what point and who does this repair work? And I did not get an answer. There was nothing said from HPC. And when I did ask, and then for what use? The only thing I got was how about a museum? Well, we're sixty-five years of age and eighty years of age and and that's just not what we can do, is turn this structure into a use of a museum. And when it has to be, when you think about people coming in, um, that is a seal, that does involve water, that does involve electricity, that does involve the 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 floor repair, the wall repair. And the, if these three people who had gone inside and gone around it, I I am just surprised that they think that that could be repaired without coming down. That just, that does surprise me. Um, um, so I, this is my presentation is in a conversation to the city. I don't know um how you feel about uh properties being sold to people who can afford them. Um, because that's probably what's going to happen in this property, whether the barn can come down or not. Only somebody who can pay the affordable, whatever market value is now. And then where goes the community of what Leadville has been, been, there's a mystique about Leadville being um somehow a community and and champion some, some cohesiveness. But I I don't understand HPC's um hand in this because I don't think it's strong enough. I don't think the HPC is doing enough to keep these, these historic structures up besides just saying you can't take them down. So that's my conversation. I don't have a presentation to counter anything that Chapin has said. Uh, my husband is is telling you the motivation of why we're asking it to come down so that we can actually sell it. Um, but the city, how do you guys see the HPC's um recommendations to you? Um, what do, what do you do when they say, hey, don't take that down? How do you, what does that make, does that make you think just about the historic nature of things? And not about the homeowner or I, that's my conversation to anybody on the city council.
Okay. I will answer that question, but it's not the time in the meeting to do that yet. Um, at this time, if there's no, nothing else from the applicant, I would like to open the public comment portion of this public hearing.
If if anyone's listening, I'll try to speak.
Steve, please.
Well, they can see process of one thirty-one East Third Street and I lived in that eight years. Um. Well, when you look at this property, it seems like it would take an incredible amount of money to fix it. But that doesn't seem to be a parameter for evaluating the historicity or the reason to preserve it. Um, the people bought this property with the idea of land speculation. And uh, uh, they said they liked the building, but apparently that's not working out for them. So I think it might not, you know, I have a problem with my building with the roof. And it's just only been recently, after an injury from two thousand seventeen, that I seem to be recovering quite a bit of my, my right side, my leg. Um, so I I understand the issue about roofs and I can't wait to get up on my roof this summer and work on it. Um, this property could be protected uh without allowing further deterioration by putting a plastic uh heavy industrial part on top of it. And that would have to be replaced probably every other year or a couple of years, depending on the grade of that. But to make a quick decision or a quick resolution of this, um, I think the uh property owners uh desire to make a profit on this is also not a consideration here. Um, if the city would want to maintain this property, I think that an offer of buying the property for what was paid for, plus the taxes that were paid for would be a unreasonable thing if you seven people decide that uh this property is really worth rehabilitation. Uh, thank you kindly.
Thank you. Is there any other public comment? Yes, Mr. Robb.
Uh, my name is Ray Robb, one thirty-sixth Avenue. Uh, I've actually been inside this building. Uh, this is common before. Uh, and someone wanted to to demolish it and they withdrew the application, I think they sold, you know. Um, I I go back uh just a little ways and say, I had an interesting conversation, I shared this with the Historic Preservation Commission uh about two years ago with an individual who was an architect. And he said, historic preservation is really hard. And he said, uh, if you want to to preserve uh historic nature of your city, uh, you have to fight for it. He said, people will come in, they're they're going to want to do what they want to do. And 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 that is the nature of home ownership, you know, I wouldn't argue that for it. So uh, this was a real conundrum for me because I look at that building and I can see the historic context of it. And I can see that, uh, you know, based on what we know, that it is possible to restore this building. Uh, there's no doubt it would be incredibly expensive and probably not what these people were hurting for. But you have to decide as a body, as HPC did, you know, what's the value? You know, what's the value of that property in the historic context of our city? And then how important is it to to stick with our guns in terms of historic preservation if it causes a hardship to other people? Again, I would say if people come in here and and think they can do whatever they want to do, um, that is not within the context of historic preservation in Leadville. I don't, I don't know that I I have a lot of uh um, I wouldn't hold that in any particular favor. On the other hand, the decision is still yours about whether it is even feasible to restore that building. So uh, those are my thoughts and thank you.
Thank you, sir. Is there any other public comment online? All right. Would the applicant like to respond to either public comment?
I don't care.
I I I couldn't, I couldn't hear very well. If he asked a question, I would, but I didn't, I don't, I couldn't hear very well on Zoom. But was there a question asked?
There was not a question asked. There were just comments made and I I wondered if if you guys had any response to them.
Okay.
No, okay. In that case, I would add to the notion to close the public, the portion of this public hearing.
Lumalad moves to close the pub, public comment portion of this public hearing. Third seconds.
All in favor?
All right.
The vote? All right, let's move on. Um, staff, we kind of have this combination of staff clarification and rebuttal. Is there anything that you would like to respond to the public comments or the statements made by the applicants?
Thank you. Nothing major, just uh, nothing major, just perhaps a minor technical clarification that uh, there's been a couple of references to this barn. Uh, so the historical map shows this hasn't been used as a barn, it's historical context, that it was a commercial structure until, a residential structure until nineteen thirty. So just clarifying that, uh, but that's, that's it.
Okay. Well, let's move on to um questions and comments and discussion by council. Yes?
Let me get one. Um, uh, you mentioned that there was difficulty with safetiness of um repairability and that's kind of my major concern. Um, can you speak more about what um safetiness looks like for anyone who would be doing that work? And would it be a dangerous operation to rehabilitate the um building? I think that's a much more interesting and important uh aspect of uh this question, uh, much more than just the monetary value and the worth of that, but rather the safetiness of the people who are actively working to repair the building and what uh safety concerns that they could have um in working in an unstable building like this.
Okay, and yeah, in the building inspector's letter, you know, he speaks to that a bit, just quick, quick clarification, you know, I'm not a structural engineer, I'm not a building inspector. Um, but what the building inspector is basically saying is that this would essentially need to be top-down construction, uh, deconstruction or demolition. Um, or even if it was, um, if it was uh being dismantled and then reconstructed, it would need to happen in that because the roof is really holding everything together. Um, but without the roof, there is, there were concerns that as soon as you start taking apart the roof, that you would not have the structural integrity for the rest of the structure to remain. So if you think about, um, you know, how a building is constructed, beginning starts with the foundation, works its way up. Well, deconstruction or demolition or uh reconstruction would be, you know, they were versus, it started from the top down. So, you know, significant amount of scaffolding and all those sorts of things. And then one of his final comments is letters that a, you know, Colorado design professional, in other words, a structural engineer would have to come up with a design uh to um to basically a safety plan uh before you can get to um the structural plans for rehabilitation. Uh, basically a str- a safety plan, structural plan for for demolition and reconstruction. Um, and uh, he was just clarifying, he's, you know, he was basically saying he's not sure that's possible.
And then, so it sounds like to me, and please correct me if I'm wrong, um, that regardless of the intention is to demolish completely or uh the intention is to rehabilitate, um, it is going to be a danger sore deal.
That is what the applicant has demonstrated through their letter that, you know, they have provided. Uh, you know, so in your packet, you also have, you also have letters of comments from, you know, from the advisory members who um, they definitely speak in a different direction, but they're saying that it is possible to uh to reconstruct um this building and that there, um, sorry, not reconstruct, but rehabilitate this building, that there is structural integrity that remains. Um, but we do not have a letter from a structural engineer.
Okay, may I speak to that professional?
That's good.
This building has a solid foundation. It is a mudsel foundation like you find on many buildings built in the eighteen eighties in Leadville. The walls are plumbing straight. Uh, the roof has been neglected for the eight years that the applicant has owned the building. It's needed replacement for several years now. Um, that roof can be taken off from the top, you use an electronic lift to do that or a crane to do that. You would support the four sides of the building, which are still currently plumbing straight. Building's not leaning, it hasn't subsided. Uh, and you'd replace that roof. It's a, it's a very simple roof, you replace it with pre-made trusses to go back on. It's not, it's not a particularly difficult thing to do. It's the kind of thing that we do every week on houses here in Leadville that are in honestly worse condition than this one. So is it dangerous? Absolutely. Getting on any two-story roof is absolutely dangerous. Is it any more dangerous than any other restoration work in Leadville? No, it's not. But if you look at how they have restored the Table Opera House with the, uh, not only with the scaffolding that goes around the outside of the building, but also with the supports they've put through the building to keep it straight and as they're removing, breaking, replacing brick, be the same process here. So not, not undoable by any means. The uh, if you look at the photos on this building, it retains a lot of its interior features. This was built as a hotel uh and a restaurant. Uh, and then it was used as a boarding house for another thirty years beyond that that we're aware of. But it still has its original wainscoting, still has a lot of its original interior details. There are areas that are failing, the roof has been off of that, off of portions of that building now for several years. It absolutely does need work. But something to remember with our historic buildings, neglect is not a good reason for demolition. The fact that somebody can't afford to take care of a building doesn't mean the building needs to be pulled down.
And can I, can I comment?
Of course.
Process. Oh, in particular, um, criteria, um, number two. The process asks the applicant to um, show that the uh structural soundness to show that the building is not structurally sound, right? If they want to demolish.
Correct.
Criteria one.
And uh, right, it, it also goes into criteria number two. Um, in the rehabilitation, for the ability to rehabilitate the property if it's not structurally sound, right? So, in the code, seventeen point four, four point zero seven zero. Um, section B number five, um, to determine if this structure would sound or not, they ask the applicant to find a qualified person experienced in the rehabilitation, renovation and or restoration of historic structures, historic structures, right? Which they did um, in the way of the, uh, the inspector. Right, and we all agree that he is qualified.
There again, there was a lot of like discussion with with the applicant, with the, um, building department about that. And the, um, I asked the building inspector, because it does say other qualified professionals, I asked the building inspector to provide their qualifications, uh, so we could determine if we had a complete application. And he did, he did provide his qualifications. And this is the same inspector that that is used to inspect all of our structures here in Lake County for building permits, so staff determined to be complete.
So I noticed in his qualifications, he was in construction thirty-three years and has been an inspector for fifteen years. So this is a highly qualified individual. And criteria number two, uh, we're given with the rehabilitation and the ability to rehabilitate it. Oh. I think you could rehabilitate anything given enough resource. But is it reasonable for this building to be rehabilitated? According to the inspector, it's not. Right, the rehabilitation, it could only be accomplished through complete dismantlement and reconstruction with completely new frame, which would require impractical and likely unsafe stabilization. So my question is, why does the commission get to say, well, we don't agree with that? The applicant has done what you asked them to. They got an inspector, qualified inspector. These were his results. And then the ordinance doesn't say unless the commission disagrees with the inspector, right? So where is this disagreement with the inspector coming from? I don't, I don't understand that component, but why is the commission more qualified than the inspector?
Our inspector has been in, uh, new construction for thirty years. He's never done a historic renovation i- in his entire career. His, the work that he does as an inspector is new code work. And he's very, very good at what he does. He's a friend of mine, uh, but he's never restored a historic structure. He really, we didn't have a structural engineer come in and take a look at this. We had a building inspector do that. He has great credentials, but he's never worked on a project like this in his life.
So in terms of the criteria or qualifications for the inspector, does he meet the qualifications that Tim outlined, including having experience with rehabilitation?
Can I respond to that?
Yeah.
Um, I'm reading a letter from John Schweitzer, the inspector. Um. And then I'll go over his qualifications that he outlined in the letter. I, John Schweitzer, and experience in the rehabilitation, renovation and or restoration of historic structures. I've been in the construction field continuously, the worker, business owner and subcontractor, nineteen seventy-five to two thousand eight. During those years, I've worked on numerous projects involving all building types of construction in varying, varying ages of original construction. I've been involved in moving existing houses from one location to the other. I've been involved in numerous demolitions of existing buildings, additions to existing buildings and various innovative solutions, so on and so forth. The structure at one oh nine Oak Street in Leadville appears to me to be in direst state of condition of all structures I've been involved.
Once again, I'm just speaking from my experience with John and the kinds of projects that we work on every single week.
Well, his letter is a bit of a trick, if you have your time.
Understood.
I am the king of the body of events.
And so, some of, some of, some of the council will know, some will, um, before Harrison Avenue was the main street of Leadville, Main Street was an extension of Chestnut Street North. It crossed over where the, the crusher works were and where the new justice center is intended to be eventually. Uh, this building was half a block off of the original Leadville Main Street. It was actually called Main Street on this side of town. Um, it's a historic boarding house, a historic hotel. There are very few buildings like that left in Leadville and therefore very few chances for Leadville to show its original character. We will be losing an absolute gem of a building. Does it need a tremendous amount of work? Absolutely it does. I'm absolutely convinced that somebody can come along and see its worth and spend the money to restore that building properly to be the gem of Leadville that it really ought to be.
Just, uh, I don't think. I think that's the issue. The issue with me is you didn't concede the whole of your team and saying that they don't comply with criteria number two because the commission disagrees with the inspector. What gives the HPC the right to do that?
Well, I don't, I don't think that's, here's what I don't think that's relevant to. I don't think that 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 is relevant to your decision. Uh, Historic Preservation Commission has made a recommendation. You can accept or reject that recommendation. Uh, asking what they have the right to do is within the purview of their, their bylaws. You can choose to disagree with Historic Preservation Commission. I think that if you choose to, uh, agree with the, uh, engineer that the applicant has provided, that's your prerogative.
I want a clarification. So in the report, it says compliance TBD under item number two, not rejected.
And this, this was the staff report that was written to the HPC for the meeting and then it's published in the packet, your packet, pretty much the next day. So it's, the staff report is not rewritten. It's, it's the staff report as presented by HPC.
Well, I would conclude that the applicant is compliant with criteria number two. And then in terms of four A, I mean, to me, the neutral, there is no neutral. They can't demonstrate the impacts and visual character of, or the mitigation of. Right, but that first sentence, that first demo- that first sentence demonstrates that they can mitigate that in the story. The fact, the fact that somebody has a different point of view doesn't matter. Doesn't mean they can't demonstrate it.
I, I would have to, uh, I'm gonna back new Tim up on this. Um, how does how do they demonstrate that any, that they mitigate any impact to the visual character of the neighborhood? Where demolition is proposed to occur? In, in your reading of this?
If the structure would be demolished, the visual character of the neighborhood impacted due to subjectivity and the visual character related to abandoned structures and disrepair, some community members might find an abandoned structure disrepaired to be unsightly and find demolition therefore improves the character.
That's the subjectivity of the table.
Well, it demonstrates.
It doesn't, but it just suggests.
The place for that to come out would be public comment. Um.
Well, I think that we need to address number four in the ordinance because they're all subjective. I mean, number four A can be neutral in any application.
And, and I think that's kind of understanding that I got from Chayton as well, and it would be interesting to have that conversation in the future. But given that it's the current code that we have to operate under, I think it's fair to say that it is certainly subjective to, um, different perspectives. Uh, for example, um, my perspective is that it is uncertain. Um, and therefore would improve the character, um, if it were to be moved. That said, um, our code is open to that interpretation of may or may not comply depending on, for example, Joey's perspective, um.
Well, I, I think this necessarily has a lot of subjectivity built into it because if it were just a series of checkboxes, it would be an administrative procedure and not a quasi judicial discussion and decision.
Well, my interpretation, I, I think it complies with four A and two.
So, I, I would like to just ask specifically, um, and I, I know you gave a great insight, Joey, on this, um, as to uh, your feeling as to why, um, it is re- um, rehabilitable. But in terms of, um, timeline and safety of the building and how long a process like that would take, um, is there a concern of safety that this process would take so long that the structural foundation of it, if, you know, the applicant's, um, engineer findings is true that it is unsafe structurally, is there a danger to, um, the rehabilitation process and how long that could take, um, and potentially causing a safety concern in that time period that's going on if things like wind, um, and other things and climate, I'm assuming, snowfall would impact this building, um, as time goes on and rehabilitation is a really long process, would it be? I, I guess my question really is, would that process be done in a timely manner to where we would feel comfortable that it's possible to do, um, given the resources?
Uh, I'll, I'll try to answer that. Correct me if I'm wrong. The owner of the property intends to sell a property, whether the building is demolished or not.
Right.
They're arguing that the, the, the properties were more money if they take a building down than it is if they don't take the building.
For sure.
But they're not, until that property sells, there won't be rehabilitation done to that building at all. That's also, that building has also been there for around forty-five years. And it's not any worse today than it was this time last year. Uh, maybe a few more shingles off for sure. But, uh, scenario, these folk have the sale, the property taxes on that property anymore and somebody sees that building for what it is and renovates that property and, and turns it into a real gem. That's an option.
Um, I have a question for the applicant. Have you, have you attempted to sell this property?
Not.
We.
We, we, uh, the property is three lots. The building scan, uh, spans two of the lots. And if we could sell the property, individual lots, that would be most profitable to us. Uh, otherwise, uh, we, we would like to, we're trying to bring the property back to its original setting when we bought it, one lot and then the two lots with the barn on it. But we haven't tried to, uh, sell, I'm just doing a vision keeping the property, uh, but
Thank you.
like you said, but in the, as long as we have the property, we will do nothing to rehabilitate that barn. It's just too prohibitively expensive for us.
But your intent is to sell.
Yeah. Sorry.
Your intent is to sell eventually.
Yes.
In one manner or another.
And it's my understanding that I can't go into our decision, they can process that factor. That cannot be a factor in our decision, right? Except that it's demolition acceptable because someone wants to sell property. That's the question.
Cisco, I think you had a question or a comment.
Yeah, um, so I really appreciate what Councilmember Hill said and have the same question. I am curious why I would need more evidence from the HPC to know that there is another possible way to restore this building. So, I propose that we table or would that be the correct word?
Continue.
Continue this, and here's why. We have to decide if if the only way to rehabilitate this building is to take it all down and then rebuild or if, as Councilmember Edwards and HPC have proposed, there is another. If there is another way, I would need more evidence, including from a, um, qualified third party who meets similar qualifications. Because the applicant has provided a qualified professional that has given us one opinion. Um, and I don't know what the qualifications are of, um, the HPC members who are listed as, um, advisor one and advisor two. Is that how it's noted on there?
Yes.
So I don't know who those people are. I don't know if they are qualified to make that assessment. Um, how will they compare to Mr. Schweitzer who is, uh, who we have documented as a qualified individual? So I would need to see that there is another option. And then we are also tasked with deciding is, would that be reasonable? And I do think that to determine reasonability, we need to know what cost would be. Because I believe financial cost is part of a criteria of what's reasonable. So I think I would need to know what those costs are to just, to determine if that's a reasonable thing. Um, so that's where I would land on this matter, based on the criteria that we have to consider.
Has the cost of demolition been determined?
No. No, and it's, you know, it's not listed. We, we deem the application complete based on the other qualified professional submittal. So, you know, I think there, there is an argument that the applicant has met their burden of proof for a complete application and, and, and that they have, um, you know, for a lot of these, that they have made a demonstration. Um, and I think the council would have to decide, you know, for a continuance, what, you know, I would, I would advise that, I think, I don't think a continuance is that idea. Um, I would advise that they can, if you were to make a motion for a continuance, you need to, um, state what additional information that you need in order to make a decision, knowing that this application has been deemed complete.
Hmm. So in that case, I think I would need to know what the cost of the the, the, the certified professional has said the only way to rehabilitate it is to take it all the way down and rebuild. What is the cost of that?
I I guess I'd like to, um, kind of also, um, I, I do like the idea of a continuance. Um, I am unclear given the information that we have now, um, as to if section two of our, uh, of this discussion is able to be determined other than complete, um, and given that, you know, as, uh, Cisco said, we do have the recommendation from the qualified individual and, and someone we've called as well, like saying that it is unreasonable, I will have to see more evidence, um, not necessarily from the applicant, but rather from I guess at this point, a third party, uh, a third party qualified person that, uh, to determine the reasonability of this, um, uh, you know, of course factoring in financial, but safety factors, um, timing, um, e- everything that could fall into the reasonability bucket, um, I guess, a, a recommendation from another professional on this, uh, would be appreciated in the continuing so that I'm able to personally determine whether or not it is reasonable since right now, um, I, I hear the concerns that it is reasonable, but I don't see the data behind that as well. And if there is that data, I would love to see a more direct, um, a more direct report in that data.
I'm not sure that that's possible. May or may not, just provide a staff response.
Yeah, please.
We did discuss this with the Assert Preservation Commission because the Assert Preservation Commission was wondering if that is possible too. My response to the HPC, um, was that knowing that the application is deemed complete at some point, the staff has to make that determination so we can proceed to a public hearing. Uh, it's not that they, the, uh, the, uh, uh, council or commission can't make a continuance to request additional information. But in terms of a third party, so what, what we have to realize is that, um, that the but in terms of a third party, so what what we have to realize is that that the applicant would have to agree to that, if that's mutually agreed upon. And if the the city, if the city were to take on that expense, then we're spending city funds that are not budgeted on a private application. And so the only way that we could do that would be through a interim into a consultant reimbursement agreement with the with the applicant, whi- which means that any expenses the city incurred on a third-party evaluation, which I'm hearing is what some members would like to to hear, that the applicant would have to definitely have to agree to that because otherwise we'd be spending ci- city funds that are not budgeted on on an individual land use application.
Uh, thank you. I think that helps me come to terms with the current application in front of us and given the data that we have in front of us, feel comfortable to agree with Councilmember Hill's findings that the current professional applicant, applicant's feedback does comply with two and given that that has presented information to us um, and that there is no further information, um, I would tend to agree that it would be deemed as not reasonable.
Well, I would say we we've just conferred on this. I think if if you are saying you needed additional information to make your decision uh, and you want a continuance to get additional information, we can figure out a way to get that additional information. So you're not expected to, if we say to you, the information doesn't exist in the world, that's one thing. Uh, but I think, you know, we can certainly confer with our city attorney and find out if you're, I think Mr. LeChant is basically saying, what is it that you need? And you've identified, um, you know, what are some of the criteria that you would be applied, be able to apply to reasonableness? Uh, if we've gotten enough direction from you all as to additional information that you would like for this, uh, we can work to bring that information back and you can continue it.
I see.
I'd also like to have some further discussion about staff's recommendation for the definition of use, which in this case you're suggesting would result in a certificate of occupancy, but perhaps it's enough for an historic structure like this to stabilize it. The property owner clearly hasn't done any maintenance on it, but if the property could be stabilized, that might be far more reasonable than a complete rehabilitation and a certificate of occupancy and still preserve the historic character of our community.
I I understand what you're saying. So some of the terms in our code need sort of more fleshing out so you're able to make some decisions on that and we can certainly look at you know, maybe potentially what some industry standards are for some of these definitions. So we we are happy to do that.
I'm a little troubled by the discrepancy about Mr. Schweitzer's credentials. And would it be reasonable to, so what we have are not his credentials, just what he says he did, would it be reasonable to ask him to present more details on that?
We could ask, you know, the the Lake County Building Department has communicated that, you know, that they are, um, they're trying to be wise with with his time and how it'll be used because he's the only inspector who's providing services. I see that something, boy, right, uh, so I would, I I could not speak for the chief building official, I'm assuming that the answer would be yes, that they would be happy to ask him to provide additional information on on qualifications.
Specifically on his experience with rehabilitating historic structures and his ability to evaluate that.
Because I I am a little personally troubled that that all of his statements regarding the structural stability and the rehabilitation are all based on current modern code, which many structures in Lake County would not.
No, we see in your stuff every single day.
There is a, there is a code for existing buildings. So it's not just, not just new buildings. We we have a code for modifications to existing buildings.
Sorry if I haven't done my full diligence, but in his findings is that referring to that code specifically or to the modern code?
It says to the international existing building code.
That's the one I was referring to.
Yeah, so that's, so that's the same code that you were referring to.
Yes, the IBCS.
Okay. So then I I guess would that still be a concern then if it's trying to meet those standards of already existing code building?
Well, certainly not to code.
We have the two thousand eighteen code, so I'm pretty sure it's not compliant.
Yeah. I imagine. But I guess does that address your concern?
No, I would still like to to see more, I think.
Oh, absolutely. I I probably agree that a continuance makes total sense.
I mean, I feel like we're measuring or he's measuring this building against current code for existing buildings and less from a what would it take to stabilize versus you know, rebuild.
You guys need to understand, the building is currently stable. It hasn't failed the roof. The building is currently stable. It is not falling over. It's not in danger of falling.
Yeah.
It's in danger of raining shingles down because no maintenance has ever been done to the building under current ownership. I'll say one more thing to the council and I will be quiet for the duration. We're making, we're making a very simple decision here. Do we allow the current owner to demolish the building for better resale of their property? Or do we deny demolishing historic building in downtown Leadville in the hopes of having the future owner come in and restore the property? We're denying the future owner the ability to restore a property if we make this decision. And there are a handful of buildings left like this in Leadville. I mean, literally less than one handful like this left in Leadville. This is one less that we will have to make the decision with absolutely no recourse. Once it's taken down, there's no way to rebuild it. Once it's lost, it doesn't come back. That's really what you guys are making a decision on.
Well, we're really making the decision on the criteria and has it been met?
Well, that's what I'm looking at our current code two. Of which, some some of which is presented in the packet. I don't see evidence that the applicant has made a good faith effort to preserve the structure, which I would say would include attempt to sell in order for, you know, someone, some other motivated individual.
And could you, what section is that specifically?
This is, this is under our down, our procedure for issuing a certificate of appropriateness for demolition of historic structures. Seventeen forty-four oh seven.
Point of clarification there?
Yes.
So you're saying there are code considerations in the code that are not in our packet?
I I didn't see that. There's the application review process.
So you, so that is under some middle requirements. That's under some middle requirements. So
Yes.
Um, it's under section B, applications for a CWA should be made and shall include the following information. Um, and then then the criteria section is for approval is FA.
Can you reference the page number?
So if you, uh, so the the sections you're referring to, I don't include like this, all the seminal requirements in the process.
Okay.
So you, so you would have to refer to that code online um, for like the seminal requirements in the process.
So that's already been approved.
Yeah, staff has deemed the application complete.
May I address?
Yes.
What you just said, Mayor?
Yeah.
So on page seventy-four of our packet in an email from Ms. Wright to Mr. LeChants, it says number four, evidence that you have made a good faith effort to preserve the structure. The responses, the only evidence we have to show we preserved the structure is we installed fences all the way around the property to keep the barn safe from anyone walking in and getting injured. We have not been financially able to put any money into this structure. Several years ago, we asked two separate recon companies for bids to repair the roof. Both both companies refused. Said it was not structurally safe for them to put roof on. So is it fair to say that that's the evidence of what they've done in a good faith effort to preserve the structure?
Yeah, staff is going to consider that to meet, you know, meet the application. It's included in your application. Um, so staff is not going to, you know, go to the level of interpreting whether or not that's a good faith effort.
I see.
In terms of, in terms of deemed it complete or not.
Now, is that something that we can include in our discussion then, or?
I think so, yeah.
Okay. So if you're not, you want to determine that we should, is what you're saying.
I think you can, yeah, it, you know, our code is not perfect. It's a good faith effort to preserve the structure is not listed as a code criteria for approval. It's listed as a seminal requirement.
Okay.
Oh, still then. Okay.
Do do people feel settled to make a motion for either approval or denial?
I I'd still feel a continuance. Uh, for my end, specifically determining uh, reasonability and getting more information on what reasonability looks like, uh, would be needed, um, for me to feel comfortable with going one way or another. Uh, I don't feel like, given some of the uh, mixed messages that we've gotten from the credentials of this individual who has deemed it as not reasonable. Uh, it would be fair to me to, I don't know, I guess, determine that and and given that that is currently our only uh, certified individuals giving feedback in the recording of itself. I I feel like I still need more of that information to be able to come to a sound decision on that, specifically with safety and monetary importance in mind.
But who would that information come from?
I haven't really.
Well, we've got some idea of the thing, information you need to make a decision, so we can either, if we still need clarification, uh, we can you know, ask a particular council member what they were referencing, but I I think we have some idea that we need some more, we need additional information on the credentials regarding rehabilitation structures for the building inspector inspector and, you know, perhaps some guidelines on the definition of use and and reasonableness that would help guide your decision.
Can I suggest one more thing?
Yep.
Um, this difference between demolition and dismantlement. So um, the inspector founds that the only way to preserve the structure would be to dismantle it and then rebuild it. Well, could we demolish it by dismantling it?
I think that would be a big tension because if it is demolished, they will sell it to somebody who will take it down and sell all the materials.
So the longer.
Yeah.
Yeah, there's also the consideration that, I mean, that would, that is not a situation you want to find yourself in as a enforcement, you know, uh, local government where you have a building, you're requiring someone to reconstruct the building. So for example, if you got in a situation where the building was dismantled and then something happened and they defaulted on their, the permittee defaulted on their obligations, you would not want to be in a situation where you're trying to enforce a building to to be reconstructed.
Gotcha.
So there's a, there's the potential for things to go not as anticipated with, you know, even if that was a future property owner or permittee.
How do people feel about continuing this public hearing until more information can be acquired? That's a good idea. So I think we need a motion.
I also just want to uh, have a discussion about a date certain. And I'm just checking right now if there's any time limit in the code about the time period when a decision has to be made.
While Mr. LeChants is looking at that, I would say that it would be probably too much to ask for staff to be able to get that back by our next regular council meeting. Our April second meeting is more realistic.
Okay.
And is there a?
I do not see a time limit.
So in a motion, we would include the continued state of April second.
Well, I would say if there's no time limit, uh, we would prefer it to be the second meeting April because
Okay.
you've got a couple of meaty items on the agenda already for the second.
So the sixteenth?
Correct.
Um, the moves to continue this public hearing, uh, with the findings of the council, the one and further seeking of information to April sixteenth, twenty twenty-four.
Second. Roll call, please.
Mayor Crane?
No.
Mayor Tom Carter?
Yes.
Councilmember Cameron?
Yes.
Councilmember Edwards?
Yes.
Councilmember Phil?
No.
Councilmember Linao?
Yes.
Councilmember Best?
Yes.
Okay, motion passes. We will pick this up again with a little more information in the middle of April. If you all have the patience and your page number.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, let us move on. Holy cow. To the board of adjustments, what's going to happen is I'm going to convene the board of adjustments after Chapin makes some remarks about the board of adjustments, and then whoever is chair is going to give all these paperwork from me. So Chapin, you want to lead us into this before I convene it?
Yes, uh, so I just wanted to provide some background on the board adjustment. Uh, it's worth noting that there are only five of the seven council members seat the board adjustment, but those positions could change in the future, so uh, maybe we can just talk about some background rules and things uh, so that if those positions ever change in the future, we've had an introductory discussion. Uh, so the purpose of the board of adjustments was really, it's 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 in the code. The board of decision of adjustment makes decisions on exceptions to land use applications with the intent of keeping the intent of the zoning code, the purpose intended zoning code. So in other words, where there, where strict interpretation of the zoning code would result in some kind of unnecessary hardship, uh, practical difficulties, et cetera, then that is a situation where the board adjustment, it is appropriate for the board adjustment to entertain a variance application, uh, which we have one in front of you tonight. Uh, so just a couple of notes on your, the creation of the board adjustment and powers and duties. Uh, so the memo in your packet explains that this is a, uh, the the members are appointed by the mayor. Uh, as I mentioned, there are five members that seat the board adjustment with four-year terms. Tonight, your first order of business should be appointing a chair, and that will be for a one-year term. And then after that, you could proceed into the variance application. In terms of your powers and duties of the board adjustment, um, as I mentioned, well, you will hear variance applications. Uh, also, um, if there is a decision that is made by staff in like an administrative capacity, then the BOA can hear appeals, uh, so not necessarily just just variances. Also, the the BOA can make interpretations of code. So if I come to you and I have a uh, a sticky issue that I I need some help with, I could convene the board adjusting for a very important code interpretation. And the last one is referrals. There are applications that are very complicated or complex. I think these are all rare circumstances, but if one arrives, I could refer an application to you or a commission could refer an application to you for a decision. Uh, there is code criteria listed in the code for decisions by the BOA, including variances. Um, I think with that, I will, um, see if there are any questions about the board adjustment and then just remind the BOA that your first order of business before proceeding to the, uh, to the variance application is again to elect a chair. Thank you.
Okay. With that, I'm going to convene the board of adjustment. Take it away, y'all.
Well, his first order of business is to elect me chair, so who wants to be a chair? I would nominate Rebecca, his chair, sorry.
Oh, no. I I I think the only thing we might do is check with Councilmember Collins to see if he's a nomination.
I accept the nomination.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, in that case, I'm going to give the media's final words.
I I think it might not be a bad idea to have a vote on the selection there.
Do we have any rollouts?
I think you can go down the line because you don't have a chair to leave the phone, so. I think you can go down the line, because you don't have a chair to leave the vote, so.
So, just started one of them. Edward's eye. Eye, on the left.
Yes, eye.
There we go. Oh, I vote for myself, I. Okay, Carrie's with it without it.
Take this one with you.
All right, what do you hear, read this? Yes, okay, good evening, my name is Rebecca Thomas, and I am chair of the City of Leadville Board of Adjustment. This is a public hearing before the board of adjustment to consider a setback variance request for Douglas and Alicia Britton at the property known as one forty West Seventh Street. When the public hearing is opened, I will first attend to some preliminary housekeeping matters. I will then ask for staff to discuss highlights of the staff report, followed by the applicant to make a brief presentation of his or her request. Followed by public comments from members of the public in attendance. The applicant will have an opportunity for rebuttal, which is the applicant's opportunity to respond to any comments made by members of the public. After rebuttal, I will close the public comment portion of the public hearing and allow board of adjustment members present an opportunity to ask questions. Once the public comment portion of the hearing is closed, you will not accept public comments unless it is in response to questions posed by board of adjustment with the applicant and city staff. Staff will have an opportunity for clarification rebuttal, which is staff's opportunities to respond to any comments made by the applicant or members of the public. At the conclusion of our questioning, the board of adjustment will render a decision on the proposed variance request. This public hearing is quasi judicial, which means that we have to follow certain procedural requirements to establish a record. For this reason, it is important that when you speak, you identify yourself and state your physical address. If you would like to submit written materials, please understand that the city will have to hold on to these materials for at least thirty days after the board of adjustment renders its decision. Any questions about the public hearing procedure? I will now open the public hearing for one forty West Seventh Street variance application, applicants Douglas and Alicia Britton. At this time, I ask the board of adjustment to disclose any ex parte communication.
No.
No, okay, uh, staff, please present report highlights.
All right, uh, so hello again, to give the record, I'm Chapin Lachance, planning director for City Leadville. Uh, so this is a variance request from a setback. Um, this property um, has a porch that has been constructed last year uh, which does encroach into the required three-foot side yard setback, um, that's required by the zoning code. So the porch here is currently one feet from, one foot from the property line, so it encroaches by two feet. I'll show you the site plan, um, that has been submitted by the applicant. Uh, this is a survey, and so the area of the encroachment is here, this is a survey showing the um, the porch that was there before, the new porch was installed. Uh, this property uh, does, um, the existing home, as many historic homes in Leadville do, uh, this um, home encroaches onto the neighboring property um, by approximately one foot. And, and then there is an existing shed in the rear. The uh, eastern side of the property is located about three feet from the property line. Uh, go back to um, the pictures here, so you can have a look again at what we're talking about, so um, the subject of this variance is um, this porch structure, um, that is installed on the eastern side of this house. All right, so uh, this came about because staff received a complaint, uh, their porch was being constructed last fall uh, without the proper permits and encroaching setback. Staff uh, did conduct site inspections, um, uh, issued a notice to the property owners. Um, the property owners, the property owners have been very cooperative. And um, the property owners stated that the reason why this porch was being installed um, was due to safety concerns. The existing um, roof does shed over their primary entrance, which is all located on the east side of the house. Uh, and also, they have um, interest in making um, this house accessible in the future. And so for safety and accessibility reasons, um, they stated that um, they would like to proceed to the variance application instead of um, demolishing uh, the porch. Um, if there was not a safety concern, sta- uh, staff would have um, just uh, continued with enforcement, said that this porch needs to be removed in order to be compliant, uh, however cited, because there were safety concerns involved. Um, staff did um, accept the variance application and immediately referred this application to Lake County Building Department um, for the applicable uh, building codes to be reviewed. Um, I should, if you wanna follow along with me on page, uh, with this ninety of your memo, um, your staff report. I do have a, an evaluation, basically a comparison of um, the building code sections that the applicant is um, is citing that apply, and the responses from the Lake County Building Department, um, which were received a few weeks ago and you're putting your packet compared here. Uh, essentially, I think the, the, the main uh, point to note is that, as mentioned down here, um, at the bottom of your safety is that the um, building code, building departments stating that no structure is allowed within two feet of the property. And so, um, even if a variance was approved, the building department is stating that a permit would be um, difficult to obtain because the structure is within that two feet of the property. Uh, so there are, um, you can read what's on the screen here, um, if you, if you'd like, but essentially, the building um, department is saying that the porch is not considered a habitable space, so it doesn't have any kind of uh, floor area requirement, uh, so in order, there's, they're saying that there's not an argument for the, the um, the floor area of the porch to be increased um, encroaching to the setback. Um, the applicant is citing another building code section, which um, says that the porch does need to be uh, increased in size in order to um, be accessible. Uh, the applicant is stating that they would, um, they didn't wanna make this property any accessible, so that is part of the reason for the porch uh, increase, the size increase, and whereas the building department is saying that um, the, the code that applies only requires a three-foot landing, so it doesn't have to be larger than three feet. And then finally, the applicant is saying that the uh, snow shedding over the front entry um, is not as historical um, design, most front entries were in place where the snow does not shed, like on the primary facade, and that is a, a safety hazard. Um, the, the building department is not really responding to that, and they are stating that uh, there are not any structures that are mentioned allowed within two feet of the property. So that's gonna be your evaluation of the applicable hood section, those relates to safety and accessibility. Uh, if you want to follow along with me on page, um, sorry, it's ninety-one of your packet. I think I have uh, all the code criteria um, listed. I'm just going to, um, I'm not going to show some screen, I'm just going to have a picture of the property um, pulled up while I go through this. Um, but as I mentioned, the board adjustment for variances is, is uh, tasked at uh, making a decision on a variance based on whether or not there's a practical difficulty or a necessary hardship in strict application of the zoning code, in this case, the setback. So key word, practical di- difficulty, unnecessary hardship, strict application. So there's four criteria, uh, the first is regarding how substantial um, this fairness request is, so in this case, it's, it's two-thirds of the requirement. Um, so, it is, I would say that is, uh, you know, it's sixty-six percent, the majority of the setback is not being complied with technically. Criteria two is, would there be a substantial change in character? Uh, and would there be, you know, to the neighborhood, and would there be uh, a detrimental impact to the, uh, to the neighboring property? If you look, in terms of the character, if you look at um, the surrounding area, the applicant has demonstrated this with their application, there are other porches uh, certainly that encroach into the setback, um, um, in the, in the area, there are also the, extra buildings that approach into the uh, setbacks in the air. Uh, so there, I think there's an argument that um, that the character of the area does have some, um, some encroachments to it. Uh, those would be legal non-conforming uh, encroachments. Uh, in terms of detrimental impacts to the neighbor, uh, it's possible the snow could shed off of the, off of the roof onto the neighbor's property. So there's that one-foot gap, uh, and you can see that there is some snow accumulation near the fence. Criteria number three is that uh, there's not another feasible, or whether or not there's another feasible meth- method for accomplishing the purpose of the variance. Uh, so in this case, you know, staff had offered that um, the door and entry location, um, where the, the porch is covering could not be moved to, to the front facade where the snow does not shed, because um, that would, that uh, I don't have a picture of it here shown, but that is a historic facade, an historic building, and our design standards would not allow modification of the historic facade, it requires stringed appropriateness. Uh, it's not something that um, that would be supported by our design standards, so I would say that that's not a possibility, however uh, as the building department has kind of noted in terms of the building, the building code requirements, a less wide uh, landing, um, should comply with the setback and meet the three-foot minimum required by the building. Um, and then, and also that would also, that was um, that would work towards ingress and egress for accessibility and, but a less wide porch could also uh, address the snow shedding concern. And then lastly, uh, the last criteria is regarding whether the, the purpose of, the intent of the zoning code is still maintained. Not enough for consideration that um, a covered entry porch is standard with uh, residential homes. Uh, it's throughout the historic district, and so uh, it kind of maintains the character, which is the purpose of the zoning code. And uh, porch is actually supported by our design standards, uh, and our historic design standards, because it, it uh, identifies a front entrance to a building, which is uh, which is a traditional feature of our historic district homes. So, uh, on page ninety-two of your packet, uh, wrapping up here, I have a basically key question for board of adjustment to uh, to answer, is basically, it's not required, but I would offer this as a guiding question to help you come to the right of the decision. And that question is, uh, does BOA find that there are practical difficulties or unnecessary hardships in the manner of carrying out the strict application besides setback requirement? And that the proposed variance observes the spirit of the zoning district regulations, and this is just a very uh, general requirement. Um, it's cure public health, I'm sorry, safety and welfare, and does substantial justice. So that's kind of the combination of all different uh, code requirements wrapped into one question, uh, hopefully that can help you um, arrive at a decision.
One, one quick one might be helpful to make on that one, is uh, the purpose of a setback requirement?
Yeah, I, I think in communities that have um, large lots, I think that oftentimes a setback is um, so that you're um, kind of maintaining that distance between other properties, so you have um, you have more peaceful enjoyment of your property through that physical space. Um, you know, in Leadville, we have very small lots, uh, and we are in high altitude. So while the purpose of the setback is not specifically called out in, in, in our zoning code, uh, I think it's reasonable to say that the purpose of the setback is, one, to allow access to the rear structures, especially for um, for things um, like in event of emergency, um, um, so that um, emergency professionals, responders can, can access the structure, get the gas main, shut off those sorts of vents, uh, no jetting, uh, so we want to have a space for snow to um, come off of the building and uh, be, be, the snow can store on the property without stacking on someone else's property. And, and then also, I think just, um, you know, having that's uh, that uh, separation, so you can have peaceful enjoyment of your property uh, without being um, too close to your, to your neighbor. We have very permissive setbacks in uh, in Leadville, in the zoning district, a three-foot setback, it, you know, is relatively you know, very permissive compared to um, to other jurisdictions, but it kind of responds to our smaller, historically quieted lots.
Okay, I think we can move on and hear from the applicant, and I believe they have joined us by Zoom.
Hi, good evening, thank you guys, um, I'm Doug Britton, this is my wife Alicia Britton. Uh, we are the owners of one fortieth West Seventh. Um, thank you guys for your time and consideration for the variance. Um, sorry we couldn't be there tonight, we had a family vacation already planned, so we hope to, um, we were hope to be there, but we'll be back on Sunday, we're up in Wyoming uh, for vacation. I do wanna go through a presentation, if we will, I don't know if we can share this. One second here.
I think we have to go here. Think, is it?
Are you guys able to see the slides?
Did it pause? Were you able to see the slides? Or no?
No.
We're only able to see your. Share the screen?
Oh, also share audio system there.
First, for some reason, it's taken our mic off when we're trying to share the slides, so, um, essentially, what we wanted to walk through uh, is a couple of things, and so, we did, good thing is that we're not trying to um, tear down a historic structure, we're trying to revive it, right? So we do live on Seventh Street, we did revive the front of it to give it the historic shingles and colors and everything else. But we do wanna have a porch that protects us from snow and ice and protects our neighbors when they come over, and also protects anyone that's delivering mail or packages to the house. Um, as you can kind of see from the roof line, it does shed off the roof right in front of our door, so it creates a bit of a hazard. Um, and so we wanted to make sure that we were able to eliminate that hazard by having the, the porch itself. Um, the size of it, we do plan to have an ADA ramp, because we have aging currents that do visit us on a regular basis. And they are in uh, walkers, and so having a ramp would be helpful, and that's why it has a bit of the size in general. Um, I know that there's a couple of comments around the fact that the snow shedding and it's not fully done, we did completely uh, comply, like Chapin said, when we got the notice, we stopped doing any kind of maintenance on the porch. We did order commercial-grade snow stoppers to prevent any snow shedding. Uh, and we do hope to completely comply with any uh, fire rating or any issues with the particular um, coating or um, um, building permit request, right?
And we would also like to know, um, there's no guards put in, snow guards put in place to the adjacent neighbor for the same fall line, there hasn't been historically. So no measures were taken by the neighbor for the same fall line, we've lived there um, part-time for four to five. Um, we're, lived there part-time four to five months since twenty twenty. Um, I have extensive travel for work, so we've observed the adjacent neighbor, um, you know, not using the walkway in the winter as we don't use the side of the house, as you could see in Chapin's pictures, there's snow shedding kind of that whole alleyway to the backyard.
Yeah, and our, like I said, our intention is, we did order, and we have a commercial-grade snow rake to prevent snow from shedding off of that particular porch, uh, because we did realize that could be a bit of a problem. Uh, one of the other things we do wanna address, and I think that um, it was a bit personal for us, which was the letter that was sent in to kind of um, go against the variance. It felt like it was a bit of attack on our character, so we did wanna kind of address the fact that um, you know, we did buy the house in twenty twenty, and we've restored it, and we take pride in trying to restore the outside and keep it historic looking. Um, and we've, we can't spend all of our time there because of our jobs, do take us back to the Northwest. Um, but we do spend, and we have proof that we spend four to five months out of the year in Leadville, and this is our home, and this is where we plan to retire when we are able to um, be there full-time. Uh, and there was a couple of comments in the letter saying that we short-term rent it. That is true, there's no denying that, we be short-term rent the time we're not there. But we want, also wanna make a note, um, we've never taken a dollar out of anything we've earned out of the short-term rental. We've actually donated every single dollar we've made from short-term rental back to the community, whether it be the school, uh, the opera house, um, the animal shelter or anything like that, so I wanted to clarify that, because I think it felt like there was a bit of a personal attack on our character uh, in that letter, so that was kind of disheartening to us. Um.
Yeah, um, so we know it's been a long evening for everyone, a lot of topics to cover, we just wanna emphasize that, you know, we think this is reasonable because of just the sizes of the lot. Um, and we're, we're very happy to keep the porch an open structure to alleviate some fire safety concerns. Um, we think the approval should be, obviously be independent, approval or denial should be independent of character, independent of whether we short-term rent, but we also want the city to know that we are very committed to this town, we love our neighbors. Um, we wanna spend as much time here as we can, but safety was our number one concern for constructing the porch. Um, and having a future ADA accommodation for a wheelchair-accessible ramp was priority. Some things we learned in this process, um, was there was a precedent set for a variance approval for three oh one Eighth Street based on historic factors alone, and not lot size being, or only lot size being an issue and not snow shedding. Um, we will be fully compliant with whatever takes to permit it. Um, and just think that, that where the roof line falls, um, it's kind of an exception with the. Um, and just think that the where the roof line falls, um, it's kind of an exception with the orientation of a lot of the homes in the historic district. Being that a lot of homes have the front door, you enter and there's either um like a coverage as you enter. Um, which kind of the front door is so far forward that we can't actually do a walkway. Um, or the front door is actually in the front of the house like Chapin described and. Just think there's a lot of limitations for us being able to accommodate that, so anything?
Pretty much sums it up. Really appreciate your time. I know it's late, so thank you for considering the variance for us.
All right, thank you very much. With the conclusion of the presentation from the property owner, are there any public comments from, yeah, Mr. Prestash?
Yes.
So we technically just need to open the public comment portion of the public hearing.
Oh.
Okay, uh, I as the uh chair of the board of adjustment opened the public comment hearing. Thank you, Mr. Prestash. Thank you.
Okay, so the property runs the basic building by north to south, right? And so the difference is on the south side. But then, so it it seems to me that um. You can do whatever you want and if the fires building that thing, I, I think I I I would have uh not. Sloped it so that it was dumping into the neighbor's yard because when you look at the pictures. The the whole sum of their roof, not only that little portion, but everything that's goes up to the peak of the house. Is going to be sliding into that section of the neighbor's yard. I think um what they should do is rebuild that um so it conforms to the three foot setback. And make the slope of the roof north to south. Uh, so that the snow dumps where you enter. Um, and uh I don't think it would work to make it. Uh, an A-frame like thing because there's a, it looks like there's a gas outlet. Um, on the north end there and the snow would possibly fill that up, so. Avoiding uh dumping extra snow where the gas outlet is, you'd have the slope going north to south. Uh, the lower end would be at the south. Instead of steps there, they could put a ramp there and have a a ramp accessible. And then if it was uh. Uh, within the setback, I don't see any reason why it could be an enclosed uh uh thing to make it that much uh better for everybody. Uh, that's my uh opinion. Thank you.
Any other?
I did receive one hard copy letter uh in the mail yesterday, the day before that I do need to read into the record.
Oh, there.
Just one paragraph.
Yep.
Uh, this is from Joanne Baron at one thirty-seven West Seventh Street. Uh, reads to whom it may concern. I feel that one forty West Seventh Street keeps looking better with all the improvements they have done. I see no harm in the porch they have added. I also feel that something should have been addressed before they finished the project if someone did not like it. Thank you.
Okay, good. Any other public comment in the room? Doesn't look like it. Public comment on Zoom? Doesn't look like it. Um, Mr. and Mrs. Britton, would you like to respond to the public comment that you heard tonight?
Yeah, I think we did consider changing the pitch, but if we were to change the pitch to come forward and go toward the street, it would actually still have the snow. Issue of shedding on the walkway, uh of being able to enter and exit the property, so it wouldn't actually change much. And again, you mentioned we have a commercial grade eighteen inch snow grade. A snow blocker that was intended for that space to prevent any snow from shedding on up onto adjacent property.
Okay, thank you. With that, I will close the public comment portion of the public hearing.
I think that has to be.
We did it by motion.
Thank you.
We entitled to know about this, who wrote this comment letter?
Uh, I don't know, Chapin, the comment, the comments that are in the packet, do we know who sent those in?
Um.
Does it matter?
I I do, if I I I don't recall her name off the top of my head, it's not listed in the. That that may have been intentional to 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 re- um remain somewhat anonymous.
Okay.
We'll move to close the public portion. Okay.
Okay.
Sorry. We'll move to close the public. Comment portion of the public hearing.
Okay, good.
Uh, three seconds.
Okay. We're good. Okay, so now I guess we have to take a vote.
Oh, we have to vote.
It's all in favor.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Now I'm going to close the public comment here portion. Uh, yeah, okay. Uh, any, any discussion?
I have a question for staff. Uh, in your staff comments on page ninety-two, Chapin, if the. Porch was four foot eight wide instead of the six foot six wide and it's that's why it coming off the house, it would leave a three foot setback.
Yes, so you remind me where I.
Uh, it's in the first paragraph on page ninety-two.
Okay, got it. Yes.
So ADA requirements require thirty-six inch landing.
Uh, yes, that's and that's in the building department.
And four foot eight would be more than enough to. To uh to have maybe a landing there would still need the three foot setback. Um, okay, all of that is is correct?
Yes.
Okay, they could still have their EDA and it's still reading the three foot setback. If it was shortened from six foot six to four foot eight inches wide off that. Thank you.
And if they had their three foot setback, they'd likely get their permit from county.
It would, it would meet the the building code requirement of the two foot now. There's still, I believe there's still a five foot requirement for uh fire. Um, what's the word?
Um, so anything more, anything less than five feet off the property line has to be built to a fireproof standard.
Fire, fire resistant construction, that's what I was looking for.
Right. Right, and it would have to be built to that standard requirement, it's just because of the size and how close it is to the to the side. But it has to be that standard now, and it would have to meet the standard even if it's not the minimum setback, but then they could actually have the permit.
Okay.
So in our packet, um. Can't remember them then. Um, in our packet, uh, one of the questions that is asked to us on page ninety-two is. Uh, do we find that uh the changes are uh practical? Um, difficulties or unnecessary hardships uh in the matter of carrying out, and you mean um in carrying out the changes? To comply with the setback um or?
If you were to enforce the setback, would that impose a practical difficulty or unnecessary hardship?
I see. Yeah, okay. Um, I guess. Dumb question, but about what do we define as, I know it's up to us, uh, so you can use what what question tool. Uh, or members, but what do we find as unnecessary hardship? Obviously, this is already constructed. Um, the work has been done and there's plans to go along with. Uh, the work uh to address some of the concerns of us, you know, um, if we take those comments at face value. Is it unreasonable or rather too much of an hardship to ask for us to meet that setback variance? Um, and reconstruct or ask them to meet the setback? Probably they need it.
Meeting the setback would be reconstructing the porch.
Yeah.
Uh, the the deck on the porch should not be shedding. Um, but they committed hardship with snow that we own the neighbor's property. And they've set a precedent that you're going to have space again in the future if you allow the variance. Other folks in the neighborhood would want to take advantage of the same thing, so you have a little guarantee not to set a precedent, you don't want to have to.
Uh, that was the only question. Thank you for asking.
Chapin, I have a question.
Yes.
They, they were sent this letter from. To stop construction on that. As a porch. The time this letter was sent, October twenty fifth, twenty three. Was the porch construction completed?
It did not have its final roofing. It had, we had had a, it had some water shield, did not have roofing.
So they completed the porch after or whatever. No.
It's not, that's not my understanding.
I believe they stopped construction, but the porch was complete with the exception of the final roofing at that time.
Correct.
But they didn't con- they didn't continue to add the final roofing and go up there.
Correct, gotcha.
Maybe get building permits to construct this, right? Otherwise.
Sorry, it wouldn't be this situation. Is it my understanding that if we did allow the variance, that they would not be able to get a permit from the county?
The there, the building partner is communicating that they would not be able to meet the two foot requirement. And that there is a two foot requirement they constructed with within that two feet. Um, but I can't speak for whether or not chief building official, if there are any other considerations for issues of building permit. Um, based on the information that I have, uh, and red lines and the comments I have from the building department. Is my understanding they would not be able to get a building permit for constructing within that two foot space.
Okay, well, I think that's a good public conference to me. Not allow the variance to ask them to. To go to that four foot eight with, we can buy a three foot setback. Still meeting all their needs, but also complying with the regulations.
Any other comments? Let's remember Lumalea, that's maybe the best. Okay, somebody want to make a motion?
We'll note that um there are motions on page ninety-two of your packet. The motions uh due to the findings and for uh for approval. Um, the findings include that they must obtain the proper permits, including COA, certificate of appropriateness and a building permit. Motion for denial include a requirement that there um be the approach, the porch be removed uh within sixty days. That would be May fourth.
What's good point is that a reasonable. I guess that sounded in consideration, would it be in our consideration? Um. Yeah, with the guidelines of the sixty day removal, uh, is that something that we consider in uh the question that was proposed to us? Um, questions for uh the BOA of the uh unnecessary hardship or? Um, practical difficulty? Is that something that we consider in approving or denying? I would assume not, but.
Is the sixty day stipulation a standard? No, that that is um basically staff has been doing its best job of setting a reasonable timeframe.
I see.
So you can taking in the seasonal considerations and I've also discussed that timeline with the applicant and they were agreeable to that.
So this is, okay, I I see. This is in a case that's standard. This is a based off of the reasonability of. It being completed for this project specifically.
Yeah, I just, I want to clarify that uh comment, um, so I'm making I'm sharing being fair to the applicant. They, I just, I just, they uh they asked. Uh, about i- if the BOA were to deny the application, what would be the requirement for removing the porch? Um, as said, the staff would like to recommend a timeline for defiance of thirty to ninety days, you know. And I I think sixty days is is reasonable because it gets sent at the beginning of summer, um, and the ground is warm and not not necessarily frozen. Uh, and it's my understanding that that was um acceptable to the applicant and I think, I think they do that on their hand raise.
We, I mean, I know we discussed this and I appreciate you bringing it up, Chapin. Um, we would definitely be more comfortable if denied. To have ninety days, especially with the amount of snow that we've seen this winter. Um, just because digging out the ground, the ground having time to thaw, so we would much prefer ninety days regardless of the decision at this moment, but. Um, we've been completely cooperative and will be cooperative with whatever decision is made. If it is approved, we're going to do everything to meet the permit requirements and make sure that it's to code, so. Thank you.
So. Uh, and for clarification, if we do approve it, let's say they still have to meet the requirements of the building code at the county level, right?
Correct.
So even if we were to say, yes, we approve it, they're still going to have to go through their process to be able to determine whether or not this is even acceptable.
Correct, yeah, that is number four, conditions of approval. Correct.
I'm sorry, um, council member, what was that?
It's on page ninety-three, there are conditions of approval.
I see, thank you.
For.
And to answer that question on page ninety-three on paragraph number four. If they take down that porch and rebuild the porch four foot eight inches, then. The difficulty was obvious.
And it's, it was a signal. Yeah, thank you. I'm sure the country.
Okay, you want to make a motion?
I'm gonna make it, sure. Edmonds moves the City Leadville Board of Adjustment, deny the variance application, PL dash twenty twenty-four dash zero zero seven, located at one forty West Seventh Street. Along with the attached denial findings. In addition, uh, would stipulate that the uh removal of the setback encroachment be completed within ninety days. From today's date.
You want to have that seconds?
Okay, let's have a vote for member Hill.
Yes.
I vote yes, board member Best.
Yes.
Board member Lumalea.
Yes.
And board member Edwards.
Yes.
Okay. That's good, Jen. But we uh, we are now adjourned the board adjustment. Thank you. Well done. That's the first board of adjustment we've had and a little bit of time. Um, all right, so we have long past almost everybody's estimate of when we'd be done this evening, except mine, so.
And mine.
And yours.
That's true. We all have nine thirty-one.
Yeah, I think we're gonna miss all of them. So let's uh, let's promptly move on to resolution number eighteen, the series of twenty twenty-four. This is. The resolution adopting the fee schedule for the city, which we have discussed previously.
So briefly, I must say that this came before the council previously and there was uh one recommended uh change to. Change the first term rental uh fire department inspection fee to fifty dollars. And what I didn't realize it was in two places in the fee schedule, so we will make that addition. In uh change in both places in the fee schedule, it will be under the fire department fee schedule as well as the show term rental fee schedule. So that is the staff presentation.
Questions? Or discussion? I would entertain a motion.
Lumalea moves to approve resolution number eighteen, series of twenty twenty-four. A resolution of the city council of the city of Leadville, Colorado, adopting the fee schedule for the city.
No, sir. All right, three more minutes.
Roll call, please. Oh, but wait, there's more.
I'm coming here for a second there.
Yes.
Okay, uh, council member Edwards.
Yes.
Council member Thomas.
Yes.
Council member Best.
Yes.
And Mayor Green.
Yes.
Council member Helm.
Yes.
Captain Willamay.
Yes.
Okay.
Next before us, uh, we have resolution number nineteen, series of twenty twenty-four. This is a resolution where city council appoints uh. Uh, an individual to a vacancy on the planning and zoning commission and um. The option of alternate. Positions which are also vacant. I would like to clarify here that we have three potential vacancies and we have three applicants. The city attorney has advised me that just because we have a sufficient number of applicants, we are not required to fill all of the openings. Um, technically, the only stated requirement in our code for an appointment is to be a bona fide resident of the city. But that being said, there is an opportunity for council to review the applications, consider qualifications and what applicants can offer before appointing. Um, however, we as a council need to be able to articulate why a candidate is selected and similarly why not. Um, so what I'd like to do is something akin to. Is something akin to the process that we went to um, when we uh, appointed council member Best. Um, where we review the applications, we have an opportunity to ask questions of at least the present applicants. Um, and then what I would like to do is make a motion, first of all, to fill the vacancy, that's the important part. This was the positioning of open by the resignation of of our friend, council member Edwards. Um, and then move on to um, the. Vacancy appointments. Um, Chapin, do you have anything to add to that?
I just wanna know that the positions were advertised uh, twice in Herald earlier this uh, last month. Um, and so we believe that um, and this, this is the second time when we have advertised this. Uh, in the newspaper in the last year. This is the first time we received um, applicants for um, the alternate positions. Uh, we previously have advertised the alternate positions in the paper, we did not receive any applicants.
Okay, um. Let's, let's start with um, Mr. Lobby who is here with us so patiently waiting. Uh, we have his letter of interest in front of us. Um, would you like to? Give us a little. Introduction of yourself and what you might threaten to this position.
My name is Greg Lobby, I live at one thirty St. Louis Avenue. Um, I bought my home in Weddell in nineteen eighty-nine. Um, and I moved here full-time about thirteen years ago. And after I'd been here about two years, I decided I wanted to be more involved. I was already doing volunteer work at the uh, visitor center. And I wanted to be more involved and uh. And uh, someone suggested to me that probably the best way to start being involved in the city of Weddell is to be on planning and zoning. So that's where in some ways the future of the city is decided. Or at least it's formulated and and those are the conversations that take place. And uh, I I was on, I did join planning and zoning at that time. And was continuously on planning and zoning through my terms there. Uh, and and having stepped down now, uh, I'm still interested in what planning and zoning does, especially as it. As it applies to uh, to chapter seventeen of our code book and five. Um, those are, those are uh, ever, ever will be uh, changes. Uh, that were making in code, uh, to have to with zoning and with permitting. So um, I, I've been involved for a long time, I have a lot of. Uh, institutional knowledge, uh, but regardless, I would be very interested in being on the planning and zoning commission. I'd also be okay being an old volunteer if there's no choice, uh, you know, for the primary, first on the board. Uh, I just want to be involved.
Questions for Mr. Lobby?
Thank you for wanting to be involved.
I, I have a question, o- other than your lengthy ex- uh, experience on planning and zoning, do you have any other land use? Zoning or moving experience outside of that?
Not really, only the time that I've spent in on the city of Weddell.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And you thought you would escape the late nights.
I'm a hundred percent certain as fast as that time. Um, the next, the next applicant um, in our packet is Tracy Laritson. Um, who um, included her extensive resume. Yet is is not here to, to answer any questions, but.
Ms. Laritson did ask me just to know that she is uh, working on a watch this evening, so she's.
Oh, right, it's super true today.
That is the reason for her absence, otherwise.
Oh, my gosh, I totally forgot.
Yeah, she also wanted to communicate, uh, if not selected, she would, she would be um, uh, willing to serve as an alternate commissioner. And an alternate commissioner uh, does uh, can vote uh, if if a regular commissioner is absent at the meeting.
Which I would have to say in my case, because I'm the city representative on planning and zoning, and so I will need to step out whenever there is a. An issue that will end up before council, um, and so there there will definitely be a role for a requirement in this case. Um, I, I, I'm not sure if you can answer this question, Chapin, but maybe you can. Mr. Lobby, was was Tracy, Tracy was on planning and zoning at one point? Was she not in the past or was she?
Yes, she was.
So I think she came to council from planning and zoning.
Okay, thank you. Thanks, good.
Okay.
Yeah, she, she definitely won.
It's not on her, of all the things on her resume, that's not on there. Okay, and our third applicant is Mr. Prestash. Uh, uh, we have his letter of interest. Would you like to get open? And introduce yourself and tell us what you think you can bring to planning and zoning.
Um. An integrity that's lacking. Um, with. And I hate to say this, the two other applicants. Um, I continue to be defined by an unfortunate incident at city hall where I pulled. The uh, grade off the uh, police department there. And it would take too long to explain why uh, we don't have the time. But. To explain this very quickly, it was just I was put under extreme pressure repeatedly and uh, it was a regrettable incident. Uh. Now, why I don't think the other uh. Uh, client, applicants meet the ethic requirements here. Is because Tracy Lawrence created an appearance of impropriety. By being, uh, by not stepping down from the city council position when she took another elected position. Uh. She created another uh, incident in propriety. When she advised uh, the city clerk. That uh, I would not be able to get new signatures on my um. Uh, petition to run for office, that I would have to recycle the old ones. And uh, that if I got, if I insisted on getting new uh, signatures on my application. Then I would be uh, my application would be destroyed and I would be uh, this, this uh. Far from running for city council. All this was improper information. And uh, I I talked with this, with uh, councilman Edwards. And he tends to write this off as uh, inexperience. I don't think so, because Tracy Lawrence's next step in impropriety. Was as an elective, as the election official, to advocate for one of the other people I was running in the newspaper. So technically, this is freedom of speech, but I think it creates an appearance of impropriety. Mr. Labey's um, improprieties were um. Where it doesn't affect me personally was. He both was one of the uh, uh, authors of the Conferencing Plan. Which greatly did not, it 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 failed to fulfill quite a few. Mandatory showers on evaluated community. That was all this regarding. And also, the real yard problems we have, Mr. Labey is an experienced realtor who has great experience, I imagine. With doing contracts. The contract with the real yard is required wherever he has it. So um, these two things were favorable for maybe a real estate perspective, but were wasn't favorable for the city of Weddell. Um. During the uh. Uh, urban renewal uh, thing. And a very odd dog leg was made out to the property and back to the mining museum. That pro- property was owned by Mr. Labey's sons. Mr. Labey and his sons own four other properties in this up so-called designated urban renewables zone. One of which we can focus on is the uh, ex-council member O'Neal's property, which is across from the playground there. And a very um. Odd deck is placed up on there now and um. That should have been done, that that is having uh, echoes. In that now everybody should be able to put up decks like that. So the historical integrity of that property was violated strongly by that deck. And also sets an improper precedent for other people to be able to do that. Um. When I lost the bookstore. Because essentially I protested what I felt was too much realtor involvement in our city government. Because now I I received a notice that uh, my house was blighted and likely I would lose my house. Um, I, uh, the 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 notice determined my house was blighted and I was reading into that, that I would be losing my house for urban renewal. And Urban Renewal, I have a book at home written by a realtor, I think it's in the nineteen sixties, the title is Urban Renewal, financial for the real estate industry. Doesn't say financial for low, low income people living in the neighborhood. Um. So I was protesting. That when, when the urban renewal thing was coming up in uh. Uh, late May, early June of two thousand and nineteen and um. Then the building owner decided that we were not uh, weren't suitable to me to renew the lease. Um. So I lost the lease there and I, and I had a promise with the building owner that uh. Uh, he would give me a five or ten year lease. Uh, when the, when the lease was up, it was a year, it was a year to year lease. So he, all of a sudden, I had all kinds of other problems, but I I'm trying to stay on track here. Um, so I lost the business in two thousand and twenty, January. Um, the court decision went against me, I lost about fifty thousand dollars of capital. Uh, inventory. And now I'm not talking, I'm talking about what I paid for the inventory.
Mr. Prestash.
And then in June.
Could, could I ask you to. Lean your comments toward uh, planning and zoning and your interest in that?
At my game today. Thank you though. So. Uh, this was a great loss for me. And then in June of that year. Mr. Labey had Joe Swires come over and cite me for nuisance violations. Now, if you go over to our neighborhood now and look at my property compared to Coldwood's property. You'll see there's quite a bit more of a nuisance violation, if there is such a thing like that. Coldwood never gets cited for that kind of stuff, at least. Not to the extent that I get prosecuted. So here I just went through this big loss, lost my business. Creditable amount of money. Now the mayor sends over Joe Swires to further punish me. Um, and that's not the first time Mr. Labey has utilized the government to punish me. When Mr. Labey was mayor, I lost a truck and a trailer. The truck was insured. And had proper tags on it. The trailer had proper tags on it. The city sees these things illegally. And he made a decision that um, making a long story short, that I would lose these items and I did, I never got it back. So Mr. Labey has done things that improve his ability to be a realtor. And his ability to 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 make money, but this has always been at the expense, e- expensive people like me or the city in general. Thank you kindly for listening to me.
Thank you. Does anyone have questions for Mr. Prestash? And. In, in your history, you mentioned in your, in your letter of interest, you have a history of, of working in various. Areas around Weddell. Do you have any prior land use, zoning or permitting experience in your past?
Well. In uh, when this predatory land uh, thing came into my neighborhood. Uh, I recognized it from things I read in the newspaper about such operations. Um. So I took the city to court over this. And essentially, uh, I prevailed, even though the judge finally ruled against me because I just couldn't keep up with the paperwork. Uh, I mean, keep the process going. Uh, but the uh. Uh, you know, I I have quite a bit of work with this Colorado statutes and so. You know, it didn't seem reasonable that the city would uh. Sustensively procedurally uh, ignore that this was going to put a hardship on the neighborhood. Because that's what the city wanted. The city wanted to improve this neighborhood and essentially gave. These developers the key to my, keys to my neighborhood and. Uh, uh, I, I want. Fell come over and actually spit on my face and wanted to fight um, over this whole thing and the city refused to do anything about it. Because we the person wasn't in town. So I'm sorry if I.
Other questions? I'm gonna ask a direct question, um, because much of your presentation tonight is. Identifying some grievances that you have with former council member Laritson and former mayor Lobby. Um, I do wanna make it clear, I really value your presence and your consistency in attending our meetings and the public comment. Um. I would like that to continue. I do have concerns about. Your ability to work on a commission that needs to work together for land use and zoning questions. Um, when you have such significant grievances against the other two applicants who will all likely be. At least one of them played a role um, in this and. How do you feel about your ability to work constructively? With a group that does not involve issues of the HPC or the Laura or, you know, some of the other concerns, the P D that you brought up?
I anticipated um, this response. I didn't anticipate you would give me a chance to talk about it. Uh, so I thank you for that. Uh, I think I could work with um, other applicants, even though we had these. This past history. Um, I think. Me understanding that this, to come up here and essentially say bad things about the other applicants. Would definitely be a bad fortune for me, but I think it should be looked at as something that uh, that encouraged. That I would do that and not uh, tell you everything that you wanna hear. So I think that I could work with other people. Um. But the only way to find that out is to. Either allow me to or not.
Other questions? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, I'd like to kind of go through this. Really what I would first like to do is discuss filling the position for the vacancy of uh, in the commission. Um. Any comments or input from anyone on this before I start shooting off my numbers?
You may very loving be not your candidate for the open seat.
I know you said this earlier, but could you clarify again, there are two open positions plus an alternate or? So there are, there are, there's one open commissioner position. And the planning and zoning can take up to two alternate positions. Which as Chapin clarified, is rarely. Yeah, has rarely been completely full. But we do need at least one.
Yeah, our commissioners, uh, we have several of our commissioners who uh, are working professionals, they have uh, child, you know, childcare. Uh, responsibilities, et cetera, and so sometimes, uh, often times the meetings do not have full attendance. And when we have a quasi judicial application in public hearing, uh, then an alternate steps in to fill a commissioner position and they can, they can vote. They also have prime consideration for, uh, if there's an opening and uh, for a future commissioner position, then they get priority consideration.
Questions, do the alternates get to attend meetings regularly and participate in them, even if they don't necessarily get to vote?
Yes, yeah, so they can offer comments uh, during public hearings and absolutely during work sessions.
That's awesome.
Yeah, thank you.
Actually, you.
Um, I tend to agree with council member Edwards. I think that um, Mr. Lobby brings an, an exceptional amount of institutional knowledge. And prior work and evidence that um, that he's worked well on this, on the mission in the past. Um. And that's all I have to say. Is there any other comment on this, the opening for a commissioner? Then I will uh, make a motion to uh, appoint Greg Lobby as. Then I will make a motion to appoint Greg Labey to the open commissioner position on planning and zoning.
Number seconds.
We do a roll call on this, please.
Councilmember Thomas?
Yes.
Councilmember Best?
Yes.
Councilmember Linnell?
Yes.
Councilmember How?
Yes.
Councilmember Edward?
Yeah.
Mayor Crane?
Yes.
And Mayor Person?
Yes.
But you're all allowing me to continue, sir. I really do appreciate it. Please do that.
Thank you and thank you for your patience. Next, I'd like to move on to an alternate position. Comments or input?
I think Tracy would make, and Mr. Lauritsen would make a great addition as an alternate with extensive experience in engineering, civil engineering specifically, but also as former council member and PMZ member.
I would also add that I found her performance on the Urban Renewal Authority very helpful when she was still serving on City Council.
I would advocate for seeing both that and says alternates.
We'll do one at a time.
Okay.
We'll do another moves to appoint applicant Tracy Lauritsen to an alternate position in the planning and zoning.
Thomas seconds. Roll call please.
Councilmember Rivers?
Yes.
Councilmember How?
Yes.
Mayor Crane?
Yes.
Mayor Person?
Yes.
Councilmember Thomas?
Yes.
Councilmember Best?
Yes.
Councilmember Linnell?
Yes.
We have the option of filling the second alternate position. Steve, I think you've heard my concerns about that. And I'm just going to leave them there. Other input?
I share those concerns. Steve spent his time doing meeting the other applicants and hearing grievances with the city. That's his presentation. And I find that attitude as counterproductive to the PMZ commission.
Certainly think those concerns are valid. And perming through a lot of the application and some of the comments mentioned, I do think Steve does still bring a valuable idea behind it. If he's able to keep personal grievances outside of the PMZ. I think that having a, someone who has had a local experience through many experiences in our community is valuable as well as non-traditional thinking towards a lot of our zoning assets. And certainly some of the grievances he did address do involve a lot of zoning. And I think having the difference in opinion is valuable though. I understand where the concerns are, especially given that most of the application was concerning the lack of eligibility of the other applicants. I would feel comfortable going either way, but I do also think that it wouldn't be appropriate for us to appoint Mr. Prestash to more giving his willingness to continue collaborating with people that he disagrees with. On the condition that he does do that and doesn't proceed to demean people who may have wronged him in his past. I think that is an incredibly important part of working in this and I would hope and give you a, personally give you an opportunity to demonstrate that, as you've mentioned, that is something that has to be demonstrated. And I, I think you're capable of it. I think you can definitely do that. And I want to extend that olive branch to you. I believe strongly that people don't lash out because of no reason and there is certainly some personal hurts that have been there. And if you can reconcile those and forgive and move towards a new leaf, that would be pretty, you know, helpful to a lot of this process. Let moves to appoint Mr. Steve Prestash to the alternate position in planning and zoning.
Third seconds.
Roll call please.
Mayor Crane?
No.
Councilmember Edwards?
Abstaining.
So on abstaining is, our city attorney can give us some guidance on that is you generally abstain if you have a conflict of interest?
I'll explain that. I consider Steve to be a friend. We visit a lot when he comes into the store. I think you have a lot to add, Steve, but you bring a lot of baggage to the table and I think that that would work against the commission who's trying to get things done in a timely manner. So I will roll no.
Councilmember How?
No.
Councilmember Best?
No.
Councilmember Thomas?
No.
Councilmember Linnell?
Yes.
Councilmember Thar?
Yes.
Thank you very much. And thank you both for your demonstrated interest and involvement. I would really like to wrap this up before we have Kelly go on to, we can do it. This. This is ordinance number one, series of two thousand and twenty-four. This is a first reading of the new language of our OHV, or regulating the business of guiding snowmobiles, OHV. Simonson, can you lead us through a little review of how we ended up back in the first reading?
Sure, I, I think I summarized it in the staff report. I, we've never done this, but I ran out of computer batteries, so throwing this on the fly. Will you recommend including snowmobiles? Oh, good. Including snowmobiles and also to basically prohibit renting and leasing of OHV's ATVs and snowmobiles. And the last change was council recommended three business licenses being available instead of two. Just a couple updates, the, the city attorney did recommend making this a first reading because there were so many changes just out of an abundance of caution. So technically it's not another first reading because this is a new, a newish draft. So it's, it's the first reading that the ordinance has presented. There will be a second reading on the date indicated in your packet, which is April second. There will not be the second reading that you all decided on the nineteenth of March. The last thing I wanted to tell you is that as far as community engagement, we did have one of the owners of the ATV, South, South Town ATV business. And in attendance, the last meeting, I did get a chance to talk to Jason, who's the owner of Elk Mountain. And he's aware of this and obviously now they're having an objection to this. So what we're doing is essentially those two, as long as they maintain their licenses, would continue with their licenses for guiding. There would be no leasing or renting and there's one license available. Just one thing to know, Elk Fountain notified me that they are going to rebrand. So they may have a different name, but they still will carry their current license. So they didn't, I don't want you all to hear there's a different company with a different name. As soon as we find out what the name is, we'll let you know so you all know. But currently it's a normal.
Same business differently.
Correct.
Thank you.
Good question. So did you get any clarity on the ATV versus OHV that we're checking? Because I don't see ATV mentioned in the rewriting.
Oh, that's a good question. I.
And ATVs mentioned nowhere in the, you know.
Oh, okay, so I'm going to ask our city attorney, I vaguely remember that discussion, so.
Yeah, we, we did not include that in this. We included snowmobiles and off-highway vehicles only, not ATVs. So that's, ATVs are separate in the statute. And as this has been, as this is in front of you, there are not ATVs included.
Okay, that's a good catch. So this is a first reading. So there's no public hearing. This is where, you know, a change like this, it can be made on a second reading if you all desire. Apologize, I remember that discussion and so we can include that on second.
If I can just remind everyone about the session, we, I think we were all in relative agreement to include ATVs as under this ordinance.
Correct.
Yep, good catch.
I think, you know, I think their legal will need to do some manipulation because the current Colorado revised statutes kind of lump ATVs in this separate category, like I was saying, and so I guess I would ask them, do they think we need an additional ordinance to accommodate that? Or can we massage that exclusion of ATVs in the Colorado statute to still use that particular statute? If I'm not making myself clear, I apologize. We can, mountain dude is no longer working.
We, we can, we can definitely look into that and see, I, I think. I've given our bandwidth to think through that right now, it's pretty much zero. That is a good point.
I like some, but it's all there.
And maybe if it's substantial changes and, you know, come back with another first reading, I hope we don't do that, but we will.
Good.
Any other commentary or questions regarding this ordinance? And I would entertain a motion, but can we add with?
Yeah. Yeah, it moves to adopt ordinance number one, series of two thousand and twenty-four. Amendment chapter five, four, and title five of the Leadville Municipal Code, regulating the business and guiding, of guiding snowmobiles, the addition of ATVs and off-highway vehicles in the city of Leadville on first reading. I further move to schedule second reading for city council's regular meeting on?
April second?
April second, two thousand and twenty-four. Didn't know if that changed.
Move number seconds.
Roll call please.
Councilmember How?
Yes.
Mayor Crane?
Yes.
Councilmember Linnell?
Yes.
Councilmember Thar or Mayor Person, Thar, right?
Yes.
Councilmember Thomas?
Yes.
Councilmember Best?
Yes.
Councilmember Edwards?
Yes.
All right, excellent. Let's move on, public comments. All right, thank you. Mayor's report, I just really don't want to speak. I'll pass for the next meeting. Council points.
Yes, I need to be a person. I'll go quickly. The other meeting, the Regional Housing Authority Board made a motion and approved a statement to city council specifically. I don't have the exact information, I'll send it to you all at some point, sorry, my brain's a little bit dry. But basically the gist of it is the board would like for the city to look more into our current situation with short-term rentals and the revenue that is being brought up. In our board meeting, Elsa Tharp had mentioned that she did some outreach towards short-term rentals and it actually resulted in an increase of revenue of about a hundred thousand, I believe. Numbers aren't going to be completely accurate. I can send the full information after this meeting. But essentially, we would like to have a further conversation about this. This is also something that a former council member Lauritsen had continuously brought up to council and had continuously asked for more of a follow-up and never gained any traction. So formally, the Regional Housing Authority has made a motion to have that conversation with the city council and further have that discussion since the board is directly affected by the funds.
Just to clarify, it's a conversation about two A funds being collected and enforced.
Yeah, and I think that's the issue is that I think that was when I wasn't even on board yet and in the measure passed without any thought as to how the city was going to implement it. And so what it became was additional duties on our finance director, which we should have thought through better as the city and how we were going to collect it and enforce it. We're going to have some meetings with lodging reps to figure out if they can help us identify who needs to be contacted on collections. But I, I have been being a little protective of our finance director so that she can get her feet on the ground. So we understand, I, I just think, I would say if we're going to do things in the future, we need to think about how the city is going to roll it out. And I think this was not thought through to, to, I think it was fantastic the work to get it passed. But we had a little party and congratulated ourselves and said, okay, Steve.
So you're going to do it.
And we didn't think that through. And so I think that's where we are right now and I wish we had more bandwidth. Because I think Ms. Tharp's point is, is well taken, is that a little bit of follow-up was resulted in, you know, a few more people paying up, which is good. It's good for the tourism channel, it's good for thousand forty.
In the meeting that, that city administrator Simonson and I had with Elsa Tharp, it seemed that in the same way that our finance director has discovered things in Cassell that we hadn't been taking advantage of, that improved our efficiency and our flow, that lodging reps also has features that we may not be using appropriately or to the extent that we could to improve our, well, our collections and our interactions with the short-term rental owners, so.
Is lodging those the same as new U S?
They, yes.
They do the same thing, they're two different?
No, they, they, they changed their name.
Okay, thank you.
I think lodging reps is kind of our side and new U S is the owner's side. And then GovOS, I think is the, yeah.
But we're still talking about the same name.
Yes, there's three names.
Worse, worse than Janus.
Yeah, the, basically, the, the thought process behind that was we do have a timeline to collect the revenue before it expires. And it's three years. We're coming up really close to that. And so we would like to see some short-term goals to meet that need and be able to recover some of those funds we could create. If it's even reasonable, and we certainly are open to the idea of it's not reasonable. You know, maybe it's not worth our resources to gather that, but just based off initial findings, we do feel like it's reasonable. At the very least, we want to have that conversation.
We have a person that will be a foundation that we put in place that we didn't have originally.
Yeah. So just wanted to throw that out there as a, a, this came up, one of the four councilors came in.
Other council reports.
I've got a couple of quick things. I was contacted earlier this week by O'Reilly Hospitality Management. They own and operate several large high-end hotels based out of Missouri. They've got hotels in Missouri and Nebraska and Texas and I can't remember where else, Montana, including one over at Hupman Mountain. So they approached me to see if I had any thoughts on land that might be available for them to build some housing in Leadville or Lake County. And so I passed them on to the Regional Housing Authority, Jackie. So I think that could be interesting someday. And then the other thing I thought I'd mention very quickly, if you haven't already noticed, the Environmental Protection Agency promulgated a new standard for lead cleanup in the middle of January. And that number is dramatically lower than anything that we've ever used in Leadville. So I took a look at the most recent five-year review and looked at the data on blood lead concentrations in children in our community. And we had no elevated blood leads for two thousand and twenty-one or two thousand and twenty. And I didn't see the data reported for two thousand and twenty-two or two thousand and twenty-three. So despite the fact that we have now a much lower national standard, it appears that the remedy, at least in our community, is still protected based on no elevated blood leads.
I think the burden of those new regulations will fall on Lake Parkville and no Greg is sort of pulling his hair over there about how to meet the new criteria.
Yeah.
Okay, another new regulation is when we have to change our city name.
We probably definitely need to change the pipes and setting home.
Probably definitely need to change the bikes and city home. Okay, any other council reports? Let's take a quick look at the meetings planner. I would just like to point out, we do not have Laura board meeting on the 7th. Thank you to those of you who could make it to the board orientation for Laura tonight. That was really informative and helpful, and I do know it was recorded. Amelia is going to make it available. She was in the appointments.
I just need to send it to her.
I would like to note, remember on that, the president will be present on the second meeting.
Okay. We will miss you. I will be remote during our work session. And I would like Cisco just to kind of wrangle all of you. I can yell over the remote screen as well as anyone else, but sometimes it works better.
So that is a segue to the reminder when you have a work session next.
Yeah, we do have a work session. This will be talking with Victor, Victor, what's his last name? Christian about the FelCrest development and the family.
And this will also be a conversation about development agreements in general.
Okay. Great.
We'll go until then. Sorry. We'll go until then.
Thank you for jinxing us.
Oh, my gosh, it is 10:11.